Okay, I think it's a good time to start. Hello, everyone. Welcome to this special session on processing in memory. My name is Juan Gomez Luna. I'm a senior researcher at the Safari Research Group at E D H Zurich, and I work with Professor Mudlu. Together, we have organized this special session. And very briefly, because before we go with the first speaker, I would like to introduce the topic and motivate this special session. So as you probably know, data movement dominates performance and energy consumption in current computing systems. For you, you have in the slide some numbers for motivation. For example, 62% of the energy in consumer applications is due to data movement, as Professor Mudlu has explained in the previous keynote. And this is due to the fact that among all these components in computer systems, like this system on chip, for example, and within these, between these components and DRAM, there exists a lot of data movement. And this data movement is consuming too much energy and execution cycles. So we advocate for computing systems to be more data centric. And the way to do it is processing in memory, which essentially consists of computing where it makes sense or where the data resides. So here, there will be challenges to solve to enable these memory-centric computing systems. But it's also a great opportunity for the future for more energy-efficient computing systems, higher-performance computing systems, and in summary, computing architectures with minimal data movement. So processing in memory has been studied and proposed for decades. And now is it's when it's becoming a reality. Professor Mudlu has also shown in his keynote keynote talk that there are already some commercially available processing in memory architectures and also some prototypes from major vendors like Samsung or S K Heinek's. These are what we call processing near memory, because essentially what they are doing is placing compute units near the memory arrays. But today, we are also going to discuss other proposals. For example, what we call processing using memory, that are those are different proposals that exploit the analog operation of SRAM, DRAM, or non-volatile memory. As I said, PIM is becoming real. The UPM PIM architecture was the first commercially available PIM architecture. It's being commercialized since 2019. But more recently, in February 2021, Samsung announced PIM DRAM, also called HVM2PIM. And or more recently, S K Heinek's and Alibaba in 2022 have announced their own prototypes. This is a picture of the UPM PIM architecture. As you can see, it's composed by multiple DIMMs of DDR4 memory. Inside each of the DRAM chips, we have memory arrays and also small processors called DRAM processing units or DPUs. This is the announcement from Samsung, the PIM DRAM architecture or HVM PIM, as I said. And here you can see a picture of this. Or yeah, to this cheapest structure, what they essentially did was changing some of these layers in HVM to embed together with the memory bank some SIMD units, small SIMD units called PCUs. And as you can see in the in the slide, they each of them can access two memory banks. Samsung also announced last year, the A X DIMM architecture is completely different. As you see, it's based on a DIMM-based design, and they tested it for recommendation systems. What they have here is essentially in this A X DIMM buffer, there is some reconfigurable logic that you can use to embed an accelerator. For example, what they did, as I said, is a recommendation system. And this is the announcement from S K Heinek's, the accelerator in memory, also similar to Samsung proposals targeted at machine learning and HPC. And in some sense, it's a kind of similar design to the to PIM DRAM, right? Because it also places these PU's or processing units near the banks. And here you can see a little bit more detail of these processing units. We have in each of the processing units, an array of multipliers, and then another tree plus some additional logic for activation functions. This is another picture. This one corresponds to H B P N M. It's a 3D stack logic and DRAM dies that are bonded by hybrid bonding from Alibaba. And this has also been designed for recommendation systems. For the main, for some reason, this doesn't look correct. But yeah, as you see here, it's mostly the memory arrays. And near them, there are a couple of engines. One is the match engine and the other one is the neural engine for the two main steps in the recommendation system that they tested. So as I said, all these approaches corresponds correspond to what we call processing near memory. You can find this taxonomy or classification of different proposals, processing using memory, processing near memory in our book chapter that you have the link here in this slide. And we are going to talk about many of these proposals today. But still, there are some barriers for adoption. That's why it makes sense to keep doing research in the topic. And that's why it makes sense to hold this special session. Things like functionality of and applications and software for processing in memory, ease of programming interfaces and compiler and hardware support, system support such as coherence and virtual memory, runtime and compilation systems for adaptive scheduling, data mapping, and access sharing control and infrastructures to access to assess benefits and feasibility. All of these can be solved with a change of mindset that needs to go through the entire computing stack. But we can go there step by step. This is the agenda for today. The first thing that we already had is the plenary talk by Professor Mudlu. Now, right now, a little bit delayed in the schedule, but we are in the first special session on processing in memory. And our first presenter is going to be Professor Sagata Goz, who is actually going to talk about some of these challenges to enable and the opportunities that processing in memory represents. So thank you very much for your attention. Thank you very much for being here. Let me very quickly introduce Professor Goz. And Sagata, if you are there, you can share your screen.
I need you to stop sharing before I can, Juan. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to introduce you. In the meantime, Professor Sagata Goz is an assistant professor in the Department of Computer Science at the University of Illinois at the Urbana-Champaign. He leads the Arcana Research Group, which focuses on data-oriented computer architectures and systems, energy-efficient memory and storage and architectures for emerging platforms and domains. Thank you very much, Sagata. The state is yours.
Thanks a lot, Juan. And no, I appreciate you doing the introduction. It'll save me about a minute or two on some of the things I was going to talk about. But yeah, today, I'd like to go over some of the work that we've been doing in my group, looking at tackling some of the challenges that Juan actually summarized just right now. And so I'm not going to go over this example, because Juan actually set this up really well. The basic premise of PIM crossing memory is that essentially we want to eliminate this unnecessary data movement across this memory channel that we see, which is really becoming a problem in a number of emerging applications and domains. And the goal here is to essentially add some sort of functionality close to the memory that can do many simple computations. And in reality, while people have talked about this concept since the 1970s, there are two key sets of innovations over the last decade that have really brought us closer to reality here. The first are new approaches to designing memory architectures and to integrating heterogeneous components. And the second is new ways of looking at existing and emerging memory technologies and seeing how they can interact with each other to perform meaningful logic. And this has done two things. First, many of you have probably seen this, but there's now a flourishing body of research that exists on PIM. I'd argue it's becoming a very hot topic in the last couple of years. But more importantly, we do have these actual prototypes that are on the market. And as Juan mentioned, we like to classify these sort of in two groups. Processing near memory, where you have CMOS-like circuits and logic that sits in or near the memory chip. And you know, the number of manufacturers such as UPM, Samsung, and S K Heinek's have put out prototypes of these types of processing near memory devices. And then we have processing using memory, where you can effectively turn on two devices at once. And then the interaction between them does meaningful computation. You no longer need discrete ALUs or ALU-type logic to perform operations. And there are also prototypes of this in the market today. A number of companies are working on it. A couple of the more prominent ones are from Mythic and IBM. And so you might sit here and say, okay, well, that's great. Companies are making prototypes. We must be done now, right? Our research, the work on the research side is finished. But I'd argue that the prototypes that we see have fallen to one or two categories. Either they target specific domains and therefore have specific abstractions that people can use, or they require programmers to have a reasonably deep knowledge of the underlying architecture that they're programming for. And we're sort of hitting classic issues that we've dealt with in the past. While we have a lot of work in the community looking at novel memory devices or architectures and microarchitectures, we have many, many application domains that could benefit from eliminating data movement, but they can't with our current setup and ecosystem that we have. And so in reality, we need to focus on completing the compute stack from top to bottom to enable this for, you know, what I argue is the widespread general purpose case. And to me, this really takes two key questions. First, how do we take the many novel ideas that we have that we're generating in the research community and actually translate them to something that's practical to manufacture? And then, once we have that hardware, how do we abstract enough of the low-level details away so that we can actually build a full software stack that can end-to-end support running a program on this new hardware? And so today, I want to talk about three key areas where we can, as a community, benefit from tighter integration. The first is enabling cooperation between the microarchitects, the circuit architects, and the device physicists. We can't work in isolation anymore. We can't simply just read a lower-level paper and try to pull out information. And what we need to do at our, the high level that we operate at is to really consider two fundamental, two key types of device limitations. The fundamental limits of the materials themselves, as well as the limits of what we can manufacture today or in the near future. And I'm going to spend most of my time today talking about work that we did that actually took this philosophy of cooperation across the hardware stack called Racer, an architecture that we've developed for PUM for processing in memory, where we overcame a number of these limitations in what I'd argue is a fairly efficient way. But then hardware itself isn't enough, right? We, as architects and circuit designers, are focused on cool new hardware. But I argue that we're at a point now where if we're going to go further, we need a software stack. And before we can get to a software stack, we need an instructions of architecture and ISA. We need a platform that allows people to write portable software that can be reused as the architectures change. It does not do us any good if software developers have to rewrite programs and a tool chain in a couple of years, because we weren't sure which of the architectures is the one that's going to be dominant going forward. Once we have that ISA, then we need to start thinking about what I'd argue are difficult problems that we frankly have been punting as a community. You know, in papers, we'll often either map things by hand or we'll come up with simple solutions that cater to the set of workloads or the architecture we'll need. But going forward, we need robust general purpose solutions to a number of the hard problems that we're facing on the software side of PIM. And so I want to start by taking a little bit of that look on the hardware side and where integration can help us and sort of giving you a little bit of a glimpse of that example. And I'm going to start by looking at the devices that we were looking at in the work that we studied. Resistor RAM, RERAM. A resistor RAM is interesting, because you can build a device where you can read and write data without the need of an extra minister. Essentially, we have a column line attached to one end of a device and a row line attached to the other end of the device. When you turn both of those on at the same time, you can actually read the device that connects those two together and get the data value out. And so what you can do is take a whole bunch of row lines and column lines and put a RERAM cell at the every intersection of the two. And that's what we call a cross point, right? Now, the reason I bring this up is because RERAM devices arranged as a cross point can actually enable a number of meaningful computations. There are a number of works, particularly in the AI ML domain, that look at multi-level RERAM cells, where we have three to five bits of data in each RERAM device. And we can perform approximate multiplies and related operations. What I'm going to look at in the stuff that we looked at for Racer instead treats these devices as digital, which I'd argue is a bit easier to fabricate today. And so we store a single bit in each cell, and we can actually do bullying operations with this. For example, in the diagram back below, if we take this row line and we float the row line voltage, so we don't tie it down to anything, we can turn on these two input cells with a specific voltage designed for the logic. And what that will do is that we'll put a current on that floating row line that will be equivalent to the NOR of these two cells. And I can take that value and write it back to a third cell. And people have looked at a number of different ways of taking not only RERAM, but other memory technologies such as DRAM, SRAM, MRAM, phase change memory, and performing Boolean logic in a similar fashion. And going one step further, there's been a fairly large body of work looking at developing PUM architectures that do bit serial operations using that underlying primitive. And so bits serial operations are kind of efficient. We often look at additions as the prototypical example, where I start with bit zero, I generate a summon carryout, and I propagate the carryout as the carryin' for the next bit, compute bit one's value. And I do this until I get to the most significant bit. And it turns out that PUM architectures, such as a NOR capable RERAM-based architecture, can perform many bit serial functions. And there's a lot of flexibility in the type of work that you can do. But unfortunately, bit serial operations, as many of you probably know, incur very long latencies. And so what architects have done is that they've taken this capable device and they've essentially looked at arranging architectures with large memory arrays. In these cross point arrays, instead of turning on a pair of cells at a time to do an operation, I can actually perform bulk Boolean logic, where I turn on entire columns at a time and do NOR on the entire column. And so the larger the column is, the more work I extract. Essentially, it can exploit data level parallelism here. And that can provide me with throughput, not only to compensate for the bit serial latencies, but to actually provide much higher throughput than conventional memory technologies. Of course, I wouldn't be talking about this if this is all great and it worked fine. Unfortunately, what we found was that while people have been focusing on this, on trying to expand the column size, we actually hit a big problem, which is that for every additional cell we add to the column as we grow that column size, we need that much more current to drive that cell to actually perform the logic. And unfortunately, this pits up not against the devices themselves, but against the physical current carrying capacity of the metal wire. And so much so that when you have too many cells, the wire metal will start breaking down. Now, the thing that we were shocked to find out is that the size of that column that starts, you know, that exceeds what we can do, it's actually really small. It's difficult for us in practice to make arrays that have more than 200 cells in a column. And so this creates a conundrum. Now, we don't have an easy way of buying back that bit serial latency cost. And on top of that, the memory world has long stayed away from small tiles, because it's difficult to amortize peripheral circuitry overheads and controller overheads across smaller arrays. And so what we sat down and we worked with circuit designers and the device physicists to figure out is, can we make small tile-based PUM practical? Is it possible, or are the overheads just too much? And so the work that we did, it took us, you know, about four years to actually sit down and start talking each other's language. But eventually, we came up with Racer as a solution to this. Now, Racer starts with a simple premise, where typically, if you look at conventional architectures, we often store multiple bits of award in a single tile. And Racer, instead, what we do is we put each bit in its in a separate tile. And so we do this idea of bit striping. What's key here is that the bit for corresponding word always stays in the same column and the same row across the different tiles. This allows us to do a few things. First, in order to send the bit serial information from one bit to another, I now need to connect tiles together. We connect our tiles using RERAM buffers. This allows us to perform communication from one tile to another without having any A to D or D to A conversions, which has been a flaw of prior PUM architectures. And on top of that, this buffer enables this new concept that we call bit pipeline. Essentially, we can now exploit parallelism across the different bits of a word. And so if we go back to our ripple carry addition example and looking at this tile where, as we go down, I'm showing you the progression of computation over time, I can start by computing the summon carryout for bit zero and tile zero. Then I propagate that carryout information through the buffer to tile one. Now tile one starts its computation, generates a carryout, and propagates the carryout from bit one over to tile two, so that we can keep going with the compute. However, what you'll notice here is that while tile one is performing its computation on bit one, tile zero now sits idle. And we can actually exploit that to do a whole new operation on a completely different set of wards. And effectively, what this allows to do is to treat the tiles as pipeline stages and the buffers as pipeline registers and actually be able to get pipeline throughput, where for T tiles, I can get T times the throughput that I had in our prior approach to PUM architectures. Now, the next thing that we look at here is how we can control this, how we can enable this pipeline. Well, we take advantage of the fact that each bit in a bit serial operation is more or less doing the same exact operation. And so what we can do is we can take our NOR commands or microops, and we can store them in per tile queues. But we can tie the queues together so that the microops done by Q zero are sent to tile one to repeat them for the next bit of data. And instead of having to generate microops for every tile for the bits of computation, I only need to generate one tile's worth of commands. And we've designed this in a way where we can control how wide we propagate this to. And this gives us granularity from a byte of data all the way up to a 64-bit word. The final thing we tackle in Racer is the scalability issue. How do we amortize the overhead of that control circuit that I just showed you and peripherals efficiently? And so we have our tiles of RERAM devices. And as I mentioned before, we have a tile per word. And so we put those into what we call a pipeline. Now, instead of having one set of control circuits and peripheral circuitry for a pipeline, we actually amortize that cost over 64 pipelines. And so this allows us to not only efficiently support multiplexing, but then I can, for example, have one I O device shared across 64 tiles and still maintain the throughput of DDR4 DRAM. And in fact, the nice thing about this is that using backend line integration, I can put the RERAM cells on top of the control circuitry and on top of the read-write circuitry. So this allows us to have a very efficient, still highly amortized device. And on top of that, this cluster that we have, we can scale it. This is an independent unit of computation. And so depending on the needs of my platform that I want to integrate this in, I can either have a single cluster with two megabytes with a storage and compute capability, or I can scale this to something as large as eight gigabytes in a single chip. I'm just going to show you a couple of quick comparisons. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but we compare against a state-of-the-art 16-core CPU with both off-chip DRAM and on-chip MRAM. And we also compare it to a state-of-the-art GPU and to dual cache, a compute and master architecture. We modeled everything from the device level all the way up to the circuit level. We talked about abstractions in the paper, and we have synthesized everything in a 15-nanometer technology node. But just as a quick glimpse, across a number of data-intensive applications, compared to that 16-core CPU with speedup on the Y-axis, Racer gives us an average of 107x speedup over that 16-core CPU. And in fact, we get speedups across all of the different configurations that we look at here. And it's not just speedups. Racer also gets a significant energy savings as well. Again, compared to that 16-core CPU, we can get 189x energy savings, simply because we're doing things in place and we have very efficient circuitry to make this happen. And again, across all of the configurations, we see healthy energy benefits. So what's the takeaway here? Yes, there are device limitations that we have to worry about. But if we work hand-in-hand with, you know, across the hardware stack, even though we're tackling these limitations, we don't need to give up performance and energy. We can still get significant wins if we work together. And so the two takeaways I have here is that as architects and as circuit architects, we need to really serve as a bridge. We need to think about the low-level design, and we need to work together with them. We can't simply just look at a paper that someone published in a device conference like I E D M, pull out numbers from the table, and then declare victory and build our architecture from that. We also need to close the loop, as architects need to be driving the requirements of these future devices. For example, just as my anecdote with what I've seen with RERAM, a number of device physicists are still focused on trying to lower the voltages and the currents of the devices. And while that can help us, the numbers I showed you in the previous slide are with devices that are on the market today or will be in the market in a year or two. We can get large wins without reducing the voltage and current further. Instead, what we need device physicists to focus on are improving the lifetime of these devices and improving the switching tolerances for them. So what do I mean by that? RERAM devices are defined by the voltages we use to set the value to one, to reset the value to zero, and the voltage that we use to form logic. And so the ratios between those three voltages, which I'm showing you on the X and Y axis in this graph, are really critical to enabling functioning devices. Now, what people proposed in the past to enable operations such as the NOR I just showed you, Magic and Felix, those, the devices that compatible with, fall in this green box on the left-hand side. Unfortunately, the devices that we can build today don't really fall within that green box at all. In fact, they fall within this hashed quadrant of the graph. And so what we did was we sent, we went back to the device physicist and actually worked with them to figure out a more practical device that can enable NOR operations while still meeting the requirement that we have for something like Racer. And we actually came up with this new primitive called Oscar, which we talked about in our JetCast paper that came out last month, that actually enables practical Boolean operations for the devices that we can build today. So that's the hardware side. And I'd argue there's still a lot of work to be done to evolve hardware into what are much more practical architectures. But then we also have to focus on the other side now as a community. And I think the reason we haven't done this is because there hasn't been a clear winner for architecture. We don't know what type of PIM we want to do. We don't know what the underlying devices are going to be. We don't even have consensus on that microarchitecture yet. It's difficult to go to people designing software and have them design software when they don't know what the target is going to be or whether it will change in a few years. And so we need to really take a page out of what computers were doing back in the 1960s, like with what IBM did for the System 360 in 1964. We need to think about abstractions. If we're going to build portable reusable software, we have to make it so that as we're still evolving the underlying architecture, we can still use our tools to be able to make this work. And so I argue that as a community, now is really the time that we need to start thinking about what an ISA looks like for PIM. And there haven't been very many works that have looked at this, unfortunately. There are a few. I'm going to look at a few examples. For Racer, for example, what we did was we took that pipeline of tiles and we extracted it away as a vector core. And we came up with our own custom ISA with a number of fairly generic instructions. There have been a number of other works, such as commenable instructions. You're going to hear about Cindy in a little bit. And CAPE, which actually used the RISC-V extension sets. These are all potentially viable ways of implementing an ISA. But as a community, we need to have some consensus in what the common set of functions are going to be if software developers are going to try to use that as the base. We don't want them to have to understand the underlying microarchitecture as much as possible. And the ISA itself isn't enough. Frankly speaking, programmers will have a tough time thinking about new types of architectures if they have to learn a whole new programming model. So in an ideal world, we need to make these new PIM architectures look as close to what programmers are used to. I'd argue the ideal vision for programmers to make PIM look as much as we can like another core. But that means that all of the things that programmers have come to expect for multiple cores, we need to start providing them on the PIM side. And these are, again, very fundamental things that we need to think about. You know, data partitioning is one of them that sort of comes to mind for me. We often hand-tune our applications to try to partition data to optimize how PIM works. Programmers aren't going to be able to do that. Programmers aren't going to be able to do that very easily. They either need to have very deep knowledge of the hardware or we need to provide them with tools to automate that. In the interest of time, I'm not going to talk about cache coherence, but we have a work that we looked at in ISCA 2019 that tackled some of the challenges there. I'd encourage you to go read that and I'm happy to talk with you about that offline. But then we can't simply just solve these as no individual point examples either. We also think about integrating those solutions for a top to bottom tool chain for programmers. That means we need friendly programming models that programmers are used to, they're comfortable with. That also means we need compilers that can not only look through a high level program and identify opportunities for PIM, but generate heterogeneous binaries, where one of those binaries targets a PIM architecture in that ISA that we hopefully will develop as a community. And as part of this flow, we need to think about how we can automate that data mapping so that automatically we can try to maximize the benefits that we get from the locality of operants in these PIM architectures. And then we need to think about the system itself and how this hardware and how this, these programs actually work in the context of our existing components. This means we need to think about OSs and runtimes that can actually manage PIM execution. And the other thing that I argue what we need to think about is multi tenancy. It's rare for us to have accelerators that we sort of use on their own. Programs don't typically have exclusive access, especially for some of the sizes of these PIM architectures that we're talking about. And so how do we support multiple threads? How do we support context switches? And importantly, how do we isolate the data of one thread from another? We need to think about not only the allocation aspect of memory virtualization, but also memory protection and how we create strict boundaries for these applications. And so hopefully, this gives you a little bit of motivation into some of the problems that I think we need to be looking at as a community. Just as a quick recap, I think there needs to be really solid cooperation across the hardware side of things and across all the different levels we work hand in hand. It takes time for us to learn each other's language, but the, without that, it becomes really difficult for us to innovate into something that's actually going to be made in the future. And we also need to think about the right abstractions that allow us to enable software that we can build and create a top to bottom tool chain that applications and developers can make use of. So with that, I just want to quickly acknowledge the many collaborators that worked with me on this work. And I will be happy to take, you know, quick questions afterwards. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Sagata. Are there any questions?
So hi Sagata, this is Stefano Di Carlo from Torino.
Hi Stefano.
Hi. So thanks for the nice presentation. I have one question regarding your last part when you talk about the need of instruction set architectures and other tools. Do you think, since we are switching to a completely different model, do you think it's also an opportunity to like push programmers to let go with the traditional programming languages and try to try to use something a bit more exotic that can exploit the capabilities of memory computing? Or should we stick with the traditional languages and try to make the memory stuff completely transparent to the programmer?
I think it's an excellent question. And what I would argue is that it's, to me, it's not that we have to choose one of those approaches. We actually need a spectrum. I believe that initially, here's the thing. I'd argue that if we were to start clean slate and we could get programmers to sort of get in line and, and so believe what we want them to, that we would take exactly the approach you mentioned, Stefano, that we would come up with these new optimized programming languages, programming models that are really capable of exploiting the maximum benefits that PIM can provide. The problem is that it's difficult for us to make that kind of change and simultaneously convince programmers that there's this brand new piece of hardware that's going to solve so many of your problems and it's worth taking the time to basically throw out so much of what you've learned. So to me, I imagine there's sort of this intermediate step where we have programming models and programming languages where they're more traditional and we might not be able to get 100% of the benefits of PIM, but maybe we get 70, 80% of the benefits, which are still pretty large. And this basically allows us to sort of sneak in and convince these programmers who might rightfully be skeptical that, hey, there's benefits for you. You can come and take the language that you used before, such as CUDA, and you can actually get benefits. And once they see that there's benefits, we can then tell them, oh, if you want to get more, now we have these customized programming languages and tools that, yes, you have to learn a little bit more about, but you can get even more of these benefits that we've provided. And so to me, it seems, the way I believe it is that it's almost a sort of journey over the next few years where we start off by giving them something that they can use that we avoid honestly the infant mortality that a lot of hardware devices have seen in the past. And then once we sort of wean them onto our hardware, then we can provide these new models that sort of take things to the next level and, and hopefully engender a bigger change at the programming language side.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you very much, Sagata.
Sure.
Any other questions for Sagata? Okay, if not, we can go with the next presenter.
Sure.
Geraldo. So Geraldo is a PhD student at the Safari Research Group at ETH Zurich under the supervision of Professor Onur Mudlu. His current research interests include system support for processing in memory and processing using memory architectures, data centric accelerators for emerging applications, approximate computing and emerging memory systems for consumer devices. He has several publications on these topics.
I guess you can hear me well? Is there a problem? Okay, great. So as Juan said, I'm Geraldo, I pitched this to that at Onur's group and I've been working on process memory for a while right now. And today I'm going to talk about several of our current works and starting with some topics that Sagata just talked about are related to system support and tools and frameworks for process memory. And, and this, this particular presentation is titled "Metodology workload and tools for process memory, enabling the adoption of data centric architectures." So this is a brief introduction outline of the talk. We have a lot of topics to cover, but sadly, some of them of the background has already been covered, so I'm going to go better on it. So as I start, is the general topic of this whole session. Data movement is a currently a big problem today, systems, both in terms of performance and energy efficiency. And data movement can happen for many different reasons. It can have, or it can be a problem for many different reasons. It can be that the application does not have enough data locality or especially on temporal locales to take effective use of cache hierarchy, of the cache hierarchy to the systems of our hardware manufacturers, or that your DRAM is limiting bandwidth, your application is demanding more bandwidth that your DRAM system provides. Or it can be a combination or the both. And then in the end, you are, your application is seeing a really high average memory access time. So currently, today, computer centric, the GPU accelerators have evolved over the many decades to include many hardware inside the chip to try to mitigate data movement costs, right? So as for example, with increasingly deep cache hierarchies or increasingly complex hardware manufacturers, right? However, we be seeing that this is not enough. We still are suffering from energy problems related to data movement and also performance problems caused by data movement. And then the solution that we come up with as a community is memory centric architecture, right? Where we move some part, some part of the computation or some computation logic to near the memory chip itself. So we can mitigate the problem of moving data across the memory hierarchy. And this can lead to, one example is process memory, which can benefit from the abundance of DRAM bandwidth inside DRAM chips or in shorter average memory access time, also reduce energy consumption. So I know that we already talked about this, but I'm going to briefly highlight again that there are different types of process memory solutions and this is a briefly taxonomy tree. So we have this what we call process near memory, where we add computation nearby DRAM, nearby the DRAM chip itself, nearby the DRAM bank or a rank or into the stack memories, which was quite common to include nearby the, inside the logical layer of such memories or process use memory, where we use the operational principles of the memory cell itself to do some particular computation. Again, similar to what Sagata talked, there is still a lot of problems that we need to solve in process memory architecture before having fully adoption of process memory into day systems, right? So again, some of them are the lack of, we need to understand workload better, which workload benefit from process memory and how can you characterize them? And we also need tools to enable the ease of programmability or constructing a complex computation using simple process memory primitives or compiler support or compiler optimizations focusing on process memory, operating system support and runtime support and efficient data mapping and data consistent mechanisms, all of them target the process memory itself. And this talk, I'm going to talk about the first two works, the first two problems over here that we have currently addressed or are starting to address related to those process memory challenges. So the first problem is how we can identify memory bottleneck and how we can correlate different memory bottleneck with different process memory solutions, right? There are many approaches right now to identify if applications suffer from data movement bottleneck. You can use, for example, perf or Intel V tune or some fancy methodology or not fancy, but some other methodologies that are commonly used like roof line models and try to correlate what these, these tools are telling you with if application would benefit from process memory or not, right? However, I don't have time to go through Intel's theory in this talk, but we extensively analyze some of those tools. And we see that they, even though they can identify some potential classification of application, like for example, in the roof line mode, you can quickly identify if application is memory bound or compute bound. Those tools fail to comprehensively tell you if application that is memory bound is going to benefit for a process memory or if application that is compute bound is not going to benefit from process memory if at different configuration, right? And they say, in the same, we observe for other methodologies, for example, identifying application that has high level cache misses breaking instructions. So both methodologies fail to comprehensively identify data movement bottleneck, different types of data movement bottleneck in a system and also correlate the data movement bottleneck with process memory suitability for a particular system configuration. Therefore, our goal is quite straightforward, right? Our goal is to create a methodology that can identify process memory bottleneck in a really methodical way and also comprehensively compare how for a particular data movement bottleneck, process memory system or a compute memory system would would perform in terms of performance and energy for a particular application. So then we create a methodology that we call the MOVE, which is a new methodology to characterize workloads and data movement bottleneck and the suitability of different process memory solutions for our particular data movement bottleneck. Or methodology has too many, we follow too many approaches during the characterization. The first one is that we use architecture independent metrics like, like special locality or temporal locality in order to characterize fundamentally what is the memory behavior of a particular application independently on the underlying hardware. And also we use the architecture dependent profiling tools, like for example, less level cache MPI or arithmetic intensity in order to characterize what is the behavior of the application running on a particular underlying hardware. And based on that, we designed a three step methodology that takes as input the user application, the code, the binary and the data set. And in the first step, we first, we profiled the application using hardware profiling tools in order to identify regions of interest or functions or instructions that can be want to further understand. This step is not necessarily of our methodology. We can skip it if you already know what you want, what function you want to investigate or if you want to investigate the entire application, right? This is mostly for, because prior works on process memory have shown that it's more, is beneficial to offload particular kernels for a process memory setup. So after identifying a function of interest that you want to further understand if would benefit from process memory or not, and we want to characterize its name, data movement bottleneck, we use our new simulator, which is called the MOVE Sim, to gather memory traces of those applications that you are going to be using step two and also perform scalability analysis where we vary the number of cores in the across different system configurations. And we are going to use as a input, the data for this step as a input for our memory bottleneck classification in step three. After that, we gather all of this information, all of those metrics that we collect in step one, two and three in order to classify the workloads into different classes of data movement bottleneck and correlate to those data movement bottleneck classes with process memory suitability. So let's quickly look at how we, how we apply this methodology over a large set of workload. So we start with step one. So in step one is the application profiling, right? So we designed this framework and then we decided to test it. So we took 245 applications from many, many different domains. And we, as for example, graph processing, different neural networks, physics, high performance computing, genomics and many others. And we profiled them using a hardware profiling tool, in this case, the Intel V tune, to in step one, to select functions of interest. And after doing this profiling, we identified 144 functions, over 77,000 functions from all of those applications that has, that pass some criteria that we stipulate for functions of interest. And then we select 44 of those applications to go further into step two and three or four methodology and 100 other applications as a validation of the accuracy of our methodology. So then we move to step two, where we use a clustering algorithm. In this case, we use scamings to cluster applications in the special locality and temporal locality spectrum into different groups. And then we observe three groups. We observe applications that have low temporal locality. Those are low localities, sorry, those are the ones in orange and applications with high localities, those are the ones in blue. And intuitively, the closer the application is to the bottom left corner of this plot, it's less likely it's going to take advantage of a deep cache hierarchy or a predictor because it has, does not have enough data localities. And then finally, we go move to step three, where we do our scalability analysis and we collect three different metrics, arithmetic intensity, less evocation PKI and also a metric that we designed for this paper called less first miss ratio or L F M R, which defines, is defined as the numbers of L three misses divided by L one misses. And then we use all of those metrics plus the metric from the step two of methodology to cluster applications into different, six different classes of data movement bottleneck. Those being applications that suffer from DRAM bandwidth bound problems or DRAM latency bound problems, L one, L two cache capacity problems, L three cache contention, L one cache capacity or application there are compute bound. They don't suffer for a particular data movement bottleneck. So I'm going to highlight one of those classes and to show how we did this study. But we invite you to check our paper for, for the discussion about all of those questions, all of those classes of data movement bottleneck. So let's look at, for example, applications that are DRAM bandwidth bound. So application in this class have low temporal locality, high less first miss ratio, high less evocation PKI and lower arithmetic intensity. Since these applications have really high MPI, they put a lot of pressure into the memory subsystem. And when we, and we, when you are seeing how the host performance scales when we increase the number of cores, we see that after it scales well until certain points, but when we reach the maximum bandwidth available for more or DRAM system, the application, the application performance starts to saturate. On the other hand, when you look at process memory performance for applications with this behavior, we don't see a saturation point because the process memory system can provide much more DRAM bandwidth than the, the, the traditional host system. So the performance of the application continues scaling when you increase the core count. And therefore, you conclude that DRAM bandwidth bound applications are naturally good for process memory. And actually, if you look at the literature, those are the applications that are traditionally studied in the process memory domain. And is mostly because of the large internal DRAM bandwidth available for process memory cores. And we also look at energy, right? So in terms of energy, we see that these applications in this class have high less first miss ratio, meaning that most of the misses that happens in L one are also misses in L three. So the whole cache hierarchy is basically doing nothing, just wasting energy. And we look at the energy for the host system and the PIM system over different number of cores. And then we see that the host and And then we see that the host energy is mostly spent either in cache lookups that are not returning any useful data to the CPU core. Or to off chip data transfer that goes from DRAM to the CPU core. And in contrast, the process memory system can completely eliminate or partially eliminate for some other applications. The, the energy used throughout the cache hierarchy. Because the cache hierarchy in the P system is that we assume is much simpler than compared to the whole CPU. And eliminate fully the off chip traffic because you don't, you are inside the chip, right? Therefore, you conclude that DRAM bandwidth bound applications have, can highly benefit in terms of energy also for processing memory. Again, we have a discussion in many other different tests of data movement bottleneck in your paper. But again, due to time limitations, I invite you to check our work for more discussions. So we open source our benchmark suite, so all of those 144 functions that I, from those applications domain that I mentioned. We collect them and then we publish them in your GitHub. Together with our DAM move simulator that can simulate different configurations of process memory systems. And, and over there, as I said, you can get the benchmark suite and the simulator. And all of that is available in your GitHub for free to try it out. So to quickly conclude this part of the talk. So the problem that you are trying to solve here is that even though we know the data movement bottleneck is a problem in applications. We still didn't have a methodology that could classify the data movement bottleneck types in different classes of data movement. Or sources of data movement and correlate those classes of data movement with the ideal solution, let's say, either process memory or a compute centric approach. Therefore, our goal of this work is to provide this methodology that can both identify data movement bottleneck and correlate the data movement bottleneck with process memory suitability. The key approach that we take is that we do a large characterization of 300 plus functions and 7,000, 77,000 applications. And we collect different metrics in order to cluster the application into different classes of data movement bottleneck. And the key contributions are the characterization, the DAM move methodology. Or DAM move benchmark suite. And in our paper, you also have four case studies that highlights the benefits of the DAM move benchmark suite. For the studies of problems rated to P, for example, interconnects or accelerator design for process memory. So this is the part of the talk, now I'm going to talk about frameworks for processing memory. Before, we keep talking about using memory here, so got to talk about that, one also talk about it. I'm going to explain how that actually works in a little bit more details. So if you're not familiar with your own background, so this is a Dura model. A Dura model is constituted of many DRAM chips. Inside the DRAM chip, we have many DRAM banks. And inside the DRAM banks, you have a 2D array of DRAM cells. The arrays are connected horizontally using word lines and vertically using bit lines. And bit lines are connected to sensifiers that sense the data into in the DRAM cell. And the collection of sensifiers is what we call a row buffer. And a DRAM cell is basically a capacitor and a transistor. The capacitor is to store charge and the transistor is to connect the bit line to the word line. So this is a really quick breakdown of the R. This is required to understand how processing memory operates. So the DRAM cells operate using three main commands, activate, read and write and pre-charge. I'm going to again briefly talk about them. So doing activation comments, the word line voltage is raised and which connects the, the DRAM cell to the bit line. Making the capacitor to lose charge to the, to the bit line. Then the sensifier is enabled, which is going to sense the, amplify the charge that was in the charge. Perturbation caused by the capacitor to the bit line to, so to the, to the, to either with the DR zero voltage, depending on how the division goes. And then in the end, the, the, the value that is amplified is stored again in this, in the capacitor. So after all of this process happens, the, the memory can, or the memory controller can issue read and write request. And in the end, to finish all of this access, they sense, we need to issue a pre-charge comment with lower the bit line is connecting the capacitor to the bit line. And then the bit line is precharged to the video over to reference voltage and the sensifier is disabled. So prior works have shown by exploiting this execution model or this process that I just explained of activating pre-charge. We can do raw copies inside DRAM without any hardware support. Or majority operations inside there, I'm also without any extra hardware support. So let's see how we do raw copies, for example. So in your copies, we have, let's say that you want to copy source row A and source row B. They are both connected to the same bit line. This paper called Ro clone from our work shows that we can by activating. My issue is six of series of comment called activate, activate, pre-charge. So to activate, to activation, activate comment followed by a pre-charge comment, we can copy the data. So how it works? So first we activate source row A, which is going to connect the row A to the bit line. And then we don't pre-charge, we send the activity to row B. We basically is letting us, since the sensifier is stronger than the cell itself. It's going to basically copy the, the first activation, the data reference to the first activation that we did. So from row A back to row B. And in the end, we are doing a real copy. And there are prior, there are recent works that shows that actually we can do this operation here in modest DRAM chips with some, with some accuracy. And in the end, to finish the computation, we issue a return comment. Likewise, we can do a majority of three operation by following a similar, similar procedure. So let's say that we have three rows, row A, B and C. And they are all connected to a single bit line and you want to do the majority. For that, we are going to issue a sequence call is again a triple activation, a little bit different than ambit, there is an extra activation. But because there were something that I'm going to show next, we can do it with a single activation and a pre-charge. So how it works? So first we activate the three rows simultaneously, this is really important, which is going to allow. The sensifier to sense the majority voltage between all of the cells connected to the, to the bit line. So here in this example, we have the majority of ABC is equals to the majority of the DVD and zero, which is equal to DVD. And in the end, we are going to copy back the data, the result of the majority back to the DRAM cell. And again, we send up a charge comments to finish the computation. So this ambit work that proposed this triple activation process for majority. Uses one of, one of those roles as a control role. So we can either do AND because the majority of AB and zero is AND or OR. And because the majority of AB and one is our operation. However, this, I'm sorry, this is the substrate that the paper proposes. So we have this simplifying the subarray and then you had designed some, we designate some roles to do the computation. Some roles for this control logic or to control if is AND or OR. And then you have your regular data roles. And then do a slight modification to the subarray so we can do a triple activation with a single DRAM address. And then this encourages less than 1% of the area of existing DRAM chips. So this, even though, even though you can do computation, you still have some limitations. So the main limitation is that we can only support really simple Boolean operations. So we can support OR and NOT or there is OR AND. Which is not widely applicable for many, many applications from different domains. And also is the, the support only little set of operations, only this AND and OR. And which lacks flexibility for other operations. So how I do addition, how do multiplication, how do subtraction? And if you want to do additional subtraction, there are works that try to do it also following similar procedures, procedures. But it requires significant changes to the DRAM array. So we need a frame, our goal is to design a framework that can allows us to do efficiently implementations of complex operations using DRAM. At, and giving the user the flexibility to design whatever operation that he or she wants. At the same time, without incurring a large DRAM overheads. And because of, and based on that, we propose SIM DRAM. So SIM DRAM is based on too many ideas. The first idea is that instead of having data in horizontal data layout as your data is storing today into traditional DRAM systems. You're going to store it in a vertical data layout. This enable us to do implicit bit shifting operation. So because we can shift the bits by basically copying one row to another. And also enable us to use each bit line as a massive parallel, the subarray as a massive subparallel, SIMD substrate. Also, you're going to fully exploit majority based computation. So AMBIT was basically doing Boolean and operations, right? But right here, you're going to leverage the, the algebraic set of majority computation. So you are going to remove that constraint that one row is a control row. And you're going to create with using the three rows as input at all, at once. And this enable us to have higher performance, higher throughput and lower energy consumption. Because we require less amount of DRAM activations to do a particular computation. So briefly, how the SIM DRAM framework works. It takes as input desire operation in the form of AND or or not logic. And then in the first step, we generate the majority representation of that particular computation. The second step, we use new algorithms to translate the majority representation into a sequence of two pro activations or activate and pre-charge comments. And after that, we create a new, what we call a micro program that so got also mentioned in his, in his talk. And seeing the instruction, a SIM DRAM instruction that is added to the CPU ISA. And then during the execution, the user instantiate, let's say, or use this instruction in his program. Now we call this instruction a BBOP. And then we have a control unit, the memory controller that transparently executes those two pro activations. And in the end, you have the end of the computation in memory. So really briefly, I'm going to talk about the steps of the framework. So the first step is to convert a majority and then our graph into a, or circuit into a majority based circuit. And we can do it quite naively, right? Because as I said in the beginning of the talk, they, we can do. I in the operation or operation by setting one of the inputs to one or zero, right? However, this implementation of the majority circuit is not optimal, as I'm going to show next. So there are prior works that shows that we, by using some optimization algorithms. See here, I'm citing this work from Dex 14. We can fully optimize a majority based circuit. I'm not going to get into tells how this is done, I reference the prior works over here. But in this case, we take this circuit that we have in the left that has four majority gates. And then we transform it, we're using this upgrade optimization algorithm into a single majority gate and they are equivalent. In this, in this end, we have, the end of the first step, we have optimized majority circuits. For that to, that can move on to the next steps. So then you have the second step, the second step, we have introduced this concept of a micro program. A micro program is basically a sequence of two pro activations or activate, activate, pre-charge comments. And some simple arithmetic operations or control operations to do the execution of the, of the, of the computation. So the goal of this second step is to actually to generate the optimized micro program that can execute the desired SIM DRAM operation in DRAM. Because based on that, we have, we proposed two tasks. The first one, the first task is to allocate DRAM roles to operate. So we want to allocate the inputs of that majority graph that you have in the beginning to DRAM roles inside DRAM itself. And on the second step, we are going to generate the optimized micro program. So again, briefly, we're going to talk about those two steps. So in the first step, the first task taking into consideration the constraints of process memory solutions. Which is the limit number of DRAM roles for computation and also the destructive behavior of doing triple activations. So our allocation algorithm basically assign as many roles as we have as for free compute roles. And, and since the output of, of the, of the majority operation is overwritten. So the original two roles are overwritten by the output of the majority operations. We can reuse that, that, that role for our following up computation. So we don't need to allocate yet another role, which reduce the number of cops that we need to do. And then in the second step, we take the generated allocation and the majority graph. And then we issue triple activations and raw copies as required for the, for the, for the, for the majority graph. Which gives us an initial optimized micro op. And then we optimize this micro op by coalescing raw copies and also coalescing raw copies in majority operations together. Which gives us optimized micro program. And finally, we generalize this of micro program because this is for a single bit into N bits. Which in the end, we have the final micro program that can do the computation. These micro programs store in the, in DRAM for future use and again, new ISA instruction is created. Finally, the third step is there is not much to, nothing complicated here. This is a simple, you can say, in order processor that is in the control, in the memory controller. That is taking the micro program and issue the sequence of triple activations to DRAM accordingly. And in the end, you have the output of the computation in memory. I'm not going to get into details about this here because of time limitation. But we, in the paper, we also address several system integration challenges that SIM DRAM imposes. Like how to transpose data from vertical to horizontal programming interface. And maybe other problems that this can, this type of solution can provide or can occur in current systems. And all of that is in our paper. So we extensively evaluate SIM DRAM using the G5 simulator against three baseline systems, GPU, GPU and AMBIT. And over SIM DRAM that can use one DRAM bank, four or 16. And then we see that compared and also implement 16 different operations using our framework. And we also use this implemented, implemented operations using seven real world applications for varying domains like database machine learning graph processing. So in terms of throughput, we see that SIM DRAM highly outperform the CPU. Cannot perform the GPU depending on the number of DRAM banks that we enable SIM DRAM computation. And outperform the baseline AMBIT implementation largely. So we conclude that SIM DRAM is quite a good framework compared to, to prior solutions. And also state of the art compute centric approach. In terms of energy, again, SIM DRAM outperform the baseline CPU, the baseline GPU and AMBIT. By 100 orders of magnitude. Again, because we are eliminating the, the, the data movement problem. And also we are optimizing the computation inside our process memory, process using memory solution itself. And we also observed a similar behavior for real world applications across all of those three different approaches. So we conclude overall that SIM DRAM is an effective and efficient solution for many real world applications. So to quickly conclude, the motivation of this talk is that processing memory can be done. So using a prior work has shown how to do AND and OR and NOT operations. But this is a quite limited set of computation that we can do. Or goes to extend then this set of computations that can be done. And give the user the flexibility to do whatever computation that requires for a particular application. And based on that, we propose SIM DRAM, which is a three step framework that gives the user the, the recipe. To implement a new computation and transparent physically this operation inside DRAM itself. We extensively evaluate SIM DRAM and we see that it provides large benefits compared to three baseline systems. And both in terms of performance and energy. And that's all for SIM DRAM and that's all for my talk also. So thanks so much for listening and I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Geraldo. Are there any questions? From the audience? Okay, I would like to ask you something. So you have presented a methodology to characterize these data movement bottlenecks. How difficult would be to extend this methodology to somehow identify when workload is good for different types of processing in memory?
Yeah, this is a really good question. So we, just to give a background, we, when you are doing the identification, we consider a processing memory system that is actually a processing year memory system. So let's say we have some logic nearby, the logical layer of a 3D stack memory. There is this problem that other processing memory systems have different properties. For example, if you consider RAM or caches or, or DRAM, the volume of the data quite mirrors in that competition. And we don't take that into account during our evaluations. So even though we believe that some of the insights can still be applicable. Whatever we have right now in the paper would require to, to be redone for other memory solutions or other memory based process memory substrates. But overall, I would believe that the metrics that we collected are enough to classify also other types of data movement bottleneck. So take the methodology, take the same metrics that we are using, but apply to another memory, memory technology. To, to, to see how it behaves for, for your favorite process memory system. So I guess that's.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I don't have any other question. If you guys don't have any questions, then we can go to the next presenter.
Thanks so much.
It's Ataverg. Hopefully he's there.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Free to share your screen.
Yes, I'll do it in a second.
Okay, let me introduce Ataverg. Ataverg Ogum is a PhD student at the Safari. Atavir Ogum is a PhD student at the Safari Research Group at ETH Zurich. He received his bachelor's and master's degrees in computer engineering from top university of economics and technology in Turkey. And his research interests include memory systems, DRAM processing in memory and hardware security. Atavir, if you are ready, please share your slides. And you can start.
Yeah, just a second. You see my slides? Or the presenter view, I guess.
We see the present review.
Yep, now it should be fixed.
Yes.
Cool, cool. Okay, shall I start?
Yes, please go ahead.
I guess everything's fine. Yeah, okay, cool. So, okay, hi, I'm Atavir and I will present PyDAM and FPGA based framework for end-to-end evaluation of processing in DRAM techniques. And this work was done in a collaboration of Safari and Categor Research Groups in ETH Zurich and Top University of Economics and Technology. I'll start with an executive summary. Commodity DRAM based PIM techniques improve the performance and energy efficiency of computing systems without incurring any DRAM hardware cost. However, challenges of integrating these techniques into real systems are not yet solved. And moreover, these challenges cannot be efficiently studied using existing computing systems, special purpose DRAM testing platforms or system simulators. And our goal is to design and implement a flexible framework that can be used to solve the important system integration challenges and analyze the trade offs of end-to-end implementations of commodity DRAM based PIM techniques. And our key idea is to develop PyDAM and FPGA based framework that enables such studies using real unmodified DRAM chips. And using our framework, we conduct two case studies on two recent commodity DRAM based PIM techniques on a real FPGA prototype of a full system. In our first case study about in the Ram bulk data copy operations, we show that in the Ram data copy operations provide 119 times speed up over CPU copy operations, including system support. And to conduct this case study over PyRAMs extensible code base, we add only 198 lines of Verilog and 525 lines of C++ code. In our second case study about an in the Ram true random number generation technique, we show that an end-to-end implementation of such a technique can provide high throughput true random number generation at low latency. And implementing the true random number generator takes us only 190 lines of Verilog code and 78 additional lines of C++ code over the code base PyRAM supplies. This is an outline of the talk and I will start with a background on DRAM organization and operation. A processes memory controller communicates with a set of DRAM chips within a DRAM module through what's called a memory channel. And each DRAM chip contains multiple banks that share a common interface. DRAM banks are organized into summaries that consist of a set of word line drivers and sensor amplifiers. And DRAM cells are laid out onto a two dimensional array of word lines and bit lines within a DRAM summary. And a row of DRAM cells is referred to as a DRAM row. On the right, I show you a simplified diagram of a DRAM cell. And here's how we access this DRAM cell. This is a diagram showing the DRAM cell connected to a sensor amplifier. It contains two components, the capacitor stores data and the access transistor determines if the cell is being accessed. The access transistor is controlled by the word line, which is enabled to connect the DRAM cell to its bit line. The bit line bar is essentially inverse of the bit line. And the DRAM sensor amplifier has an enable signal which determines if the sensor amplifier is currently active. Initially, both the access transistor and the sensor amplifier are disabled and both ends of the sensor amplifier are maintained at half VDD. In this example, the capacitor is fully charged. And to access the cell, we first enable the word line and this connects the capacitor to its bit line. Since the capacitor has a voltage level higher than the bit line, the charge starts flowing from the cell to the bit line, resulting in the bit line voltage to deviate slightly towards VDD. When we enable the sensor amplifier, we'll compare the voltage levels of bit line and bit line bar and amplify the deviation until the bit line voltage reaches VDD. Now, since the capacitor is still connected to the bit line, the amplification process also restores the charge in the capacitor. Now we will look at how DRAM operates at the scope of a single summary. Because memory controllers typically access DRAM cells in the granularity of a cache block, we combine consecutive DRAM cells to form cache blocks in this diagram. And on the bottom, we have a timeline of DRAM commands. First, we activate the first row to copy its cache size to the sensor amplifier. At this point, we can read data in cache line granularity from the sensor amplifier by sending read commands. To access another row, we must first pre-charge the DRAM bank, which closes the open DRAM row and sets the bit line voltage to half VDD. And we can now activate the second row before we read data from it using read commands. To ensure correct operation in DRAM, we must obey certain timing parameters that define intervals between DRAM command pairs. And three important parameters for our work are TAS, TRP and TRCD. Now I'll explain what those are. TAS is the time required for the charge to become restored in the capacitors on the open row. And it dictates the amount of time we have to wait between successive activate and pre-charge commands. TRP is the time it takes for the bit line to become pre-charged to half VDD. So we can issue a new activate command to enable another row. And successive pre-charge and activate commands must be separated by a TRP amount of time. Finally, TRCD is the time it takes for sensor amplifiers to amplify the bit line voltage to an IOR readable value. And successive activate and read commands must be separated by a TRCD amount of time. And now I'll briefly introduce one commodity DRAM based PIM technique that we study in our work. These techniques use operational principles of commodity DRAM chips to move data or perform computation inside the memory chip. And two examples of such techniques relevant to our work are in the RAM data copy or initialization and in the RAM true random number generation. I will describe our first case study in detail to finish my presentation on time. So I'll describe the key idea of in the RAM copy over this diagram. It shows a simplified diagram, a simplified view of a DRAM summary with a set of DRAM rows and sensor amplifiers. And we want to copy the orange source row to the gray destination row. First, we need to copy the source row to the row buffer. And then we can move the data from the sensor amplifier to the destination row. Current DRAM chips already support the first step of this operation. We can use activate commands to copy the source row to the sensor amplifier. But I will describe how we can move data back from sensor amplifiers to the destination row later in my presentation. Now I will describe our framework, PyDAM. PyDAM's goal is to provide a flexible framework that's useful for studies on commodity DRAM based PIM techniques. To achieve this goal, we first identify several key components that are shared across end-to-end implementations of different processing in memory techniques. Then we develop these key components as customizable modules to provide modularity and enhance the accessibility of PyDAM. Overall, these components provide a common basis for developers of the framework to implement and enable system support for PIM techniques. We implement four hardware and software components. On the hardware side, we implement a flexible processing in memory operations controller and an easy to extend memory controller. On the software side, we implement an extensible software library and a custom supervisor software. And I will describe how these components behave in the upcoming slides. We attach the components to a real RIS5 based computing system to develop PyDAM system design. And the system, we implement the PIM operations controller and the PyDAM memory controller as hardware modules in the hardware system. And the custom supervisor software runs on this hardware system. Finally, the extensible software library is used by the supervisor software to perform PIM operations. I will describe each component using this diagram. The PIM operations, operations controller decodes and executes PyDAM instructions to perform PIM operations. It is connected to the hardware system as a memory mapped module, meaning that it receives the PyDAM instructions over the memory bus from the RIS5 CPU core. The three registers depicted as instruction, flag and data registers in this figure are accessible over the memory bus. And this makes it easier to port PIM operations controller to another system that uses a different CPU ISA. PIM operations controller communicates with the PyDAM memory controller over a simple interface, where it first sends a request for a PIM operation to the memory controller, waits until the operation is completed and then reads the results from the memory controller to finish executing a PIM operation. The PyDAM memory controller performs PIM operations by using timing parameters smaller than manufacturer recommended values. The command scheduler inside the memory controller supports conventional memory operations like stores and loads. And we implement one state machine in the command scheduler to control the execution for each memory operation. This makes PyDAM's memory controller easy to extend, support new PIM operations or new DRAM commands by just simply replicating the state machines. The physical interface controls the physical signals on the DDR3 interface. It receives DRAM commands from the command scheduler and drives the DDR3 interface signals. The PIM operations library or PIMALIB encapsulates customizable functions that interface with the PIM operations controller to perform PIM operations. And we expose the PIM functionality to software using PIMALIB. To perform a PIM operation, a typical function in PIMALIB will execute load and store requests to access the memory map registers in the PIM operations controller. I later described the protocol that PIMALIB will base while communicating with the PIM operations controller. The final component, custom supervisor software, exposes PIM operations to the user application via system calls. We implement the necessary OS primitives to develop end-to-end PIM techniques in the custom supervisor software, such as memory management and allocation, specialized for in the RAM copy or row clone operations. I'll describe the execution flow for a PIM operation in the PyDAM framework. And as an example, we will look at what happens when the user calls the copy function to perform an in the RAM copy operation. The user will first make a system call to the to the copy function to copy N bytes from array A to array B. And the custom supervisor software finds the physical addresses corresponding to arrays A and B and then calls the copy function in the PIMALIB with the semantics that I show you here. The function takes two arguments, S is the address of the source DRAM row and D is the address of the destination DRAM row. The copy function executes two store instructions in the CPU. The first store instruction updates the instruction register and the PIM operations controller with a PyDAM instruction. And this instruction tells the PIM operations controller to perform an in the RAM copy from row S to row D. And the second store instruction sets the start flag in the flag register. And this initiates the PIM operation. When the start flag is set, the PIM operations controller tells the memory controller to perform an in the RAM copy operation from row S to row D. And then the memory controller acknowledges the PIM operations controller's request. The PIM operations controllers resets the start flag and sets the act flag. This indicates that the PyDAM memory controller has started executing the last valid PIM operation. To finish executing the operation, the PyDAM memory controller issues DRAM commands with violated, violated timing parameters to the DDR3 module. When the memory controller issues the last DRAM command to perform, finish performing the operation, it sets the FIN flag. And this indicates that the memory controller has completed executing the last valid PIM operation. The PIMALIB copy function periodically checks either the ACT or FIN flags based on a user specified argument to block to block execution until either the start or until the end of the PIM operation. In other words, the PIMALIB function returns when either the ACT or the FIN flag is set. In this example, we did not make use of the data register in the PIM operations controller. And this register was not useful because the in the RAM copy operations result is already stored in memory, just in another location. However, we use this register in our in the RAM true random number generator implementation, in which case the random number generation function and the PIMALIB accesses the data register using load instructions to retrieve random numbers to the user application. In short, we implement four key components that together orchestrate the execution of PIM operations in PyDAM. And these components provide an extensible basis for end-to-end integration of PIM techniques in real systems. We developed a prototype of PyDAM's full system on the Xilinx CC706 FPGA board. And there is five system we use comprises an in-order pipeline, this five core with level one data and instruction caches and a transaction look as a buffer. And we enable PIM operations inside the DRAM module under the metal cage in this photograph. I'll continue with the case study that we performed on our full system prototype. We performed two case studies, one on in the Ram bulk data copy operations based on ROKON and one on an in the RAM true random number generation technique based on DRANGE. Our goal in performing these case studies is to demonstrate the flexibility and ease of use of PyDAM as well as its effectiveness in evaluating commodity DRAM based PIM techniques end-to-end. I'll describe the first case study in detail. And the key idea in our local implementation is to perform in the RAM copy operations by using carefully crafted DRAM command sequences. We use the command sequences proposed by the CompeteM papers, which demonstrates in the RAM copy operations in real DDR3 chips. We send an activate, pre-charge, activate command sequence with greatly violated TAS and TRP timing parameters. And this operation allows us to copy a source row to a destination row in the same DRAM summary. We target the source row with the first activate command, wait for 10 milliseconds, send a pre-charge command and then wait for another 10 milliseconds and target the destination row with the second activate command to perform this operation. We extend the PyDAM's memory controller with a new state machine that controls the activate, pre-charge, activate command sequence and expose this operation to PIMALIB by implementing the copy PyDAM instruction in the PIM operations controller. These two modifications take us only 198 lines of Verilog code or PyDAM's code base. We then study the challenges in integrating ROKON end-to-end in a real system. The first challenge we identify is proper memory allocation for ROKON operations. Because ROKON operations can only copy data inside a summary, the data structures must be allocated properly to benefit from fast bulk data copy operations. The second challenge is maintaining memory coherence. Because data movement is done inside memory, any cached copies of the data that we operate on must be up to date in the RAM. To address the second challenge, we implement the CL flush instruction inside the RIS5 CPU. This instruction allows us to evict a cache block given its address as an argument from CPU caches to the DRAM module. We use CL flush instructions to evict data to DRAM prior to ROKON operations. I'll now explain the first challenge in a bit more detail. We identify three memory allocation requirements for operants of ROKON operations. And this is a simplified diagram of a DRAM chip with two banks on two columns and two summaries on two rows. The first requirement is the granularity requirement. Operants must occupy their DRAM nodes fully, otherwise ROKON operations may overwrite data on the destination row. The second requirement is called alignment. Operants must be placed at the same offsets in the respective DRAM roles. This is because in the RAM, the operant can be copied to the other operant only if their bits share the same set of sensor amplifiers. The third requirement is called mapping. Because ROKON operations can only be performed inside a DRAM summary, the operants must be placed or allocated in the same DRAM summary, in the same DRAM bank. In contrast to previous operant allocations that I showed you in this figure, the allocation for source four and target four satisfy all three requirements and we can use this in ROKON operations. We implement a new memory allocation function in the custom supervisor software to overcome all these challenges of memory allocation for ROKON. The goal of this function is to allow programmers to allocate virtual memory pages that are mapped to the same DRAM summary in an aligned way. And the key mechanism of our function is to distribute the allocated virtual pages to different banks, but also map the virtual pages to different roles in the same DRAM summary. We implement a local line with the semantics that I show you here. It takes two arguments, the size argument tells the amount of data it needs to copy, it needs to allocate in bytes. And the ID argument is supplied by the programmer to collect data structures that are allocated with different alloc line calls under the same summary. The reason for the ID is essentially such that these different arrays can be copied to and from each other. And I will refer you to our paper on archive for more details about the our implementation of a local line. Finally, I'll talk about how we evaluated our case study. We evaluated the performance of ROKON operations with system support in our PyDAM prototype. And this table shows the configuration of our prototype system. We run two sets of micro We run two sets of micro benchmarks called CPU copy and Rocco copy. To perform both data copy operations in the CPU copy micro benchmark, we execute load and store instructions in the res five core. And in the Rocco copy micro benchmark, we execute interim copy instructions. We estimate the performance improvements provided by Rocco copy and initialization operations using two copy initialization heavy workloads. And finally, we run the lip quantum workload from spec 2006 end-to-end on our prototype. This plot shows the throughput improvement provided by interim copy operations for both data initialization and copy over CPU-based copy and initialization operations. Here, we don't execute any CL flush instructions and we assume that the data is up to date in the year. The x-axis in this figure shows the size of the arrays that we copy or initialize. The dark gray bar shows the improvement for initialization operations and the bright gray bar shows the improvement for copy operations. We observe that interim copy and initialization can improve throughput by 119 and 89 times respectively. And then we evaluate the overhead of CL flush operations. And this plot shows the throughput improvement provided by interim copy and initialization over CPU copy and initialization. When we copy eight megabytes of data, and all of this data is cast. And the x-axis shows the proportion of the modified cache blocks among all cache blocks of the data that's being copied. So the proportion of the modified cache blocks will need to be evicted, so written back to main memory. We observed that CL flush operations dramatically reduce the potential copy throughput improvement provided by Rocco operations. I'll summarize our results for other workloads in the slide. This plot shows the speed up provided by Rocco copy operations for the fork bench workload when the copy operations are used. In the copy operations are used instead of CPU-based copy operations. The x-axis shows the different configurations of the fork bench workload, where the number after the hyphen indicates the amount of four kilobyte pages copied after each fork call. We observe that as the fraction of time spent on copy operations increase indicated by the blue curve here, the speed up provided by Rocco increases and reaches up to 42.9% for the fork 2K configuration. We observe 9% reduction in execution time for the initialization heavy compile workload, which is expected as compile spends 17% of its execution time on initialization. Finally, we observe 1.3% end-to-end execution time reduction for lip quantum. And similarly, this is because in our experiments, lip quantum spends only 2.3% of its time on both data initialization. I'll conclude with a summary. Commodity DRAM-based PIM techniques improve the performance and energy efficiency of computing systems without additional DRAM hardware costs. However, the integration of these techniques into computing systems remain unexplored and existing evaluation platforms cannot be used for studying system integration of commodity DRAM-based PIM techniques. Our goal is to design and implement a flexible framework that can be used for system integration of studies of such techniques. And to achieve our goal, we develop a flexible FPGA-based framework that performs PIM operations in real DRAM chips. And to demonstrate our framework's flexibility and effectiveness on end-to-end integration studies, we conduct two case studies of two recent commodity DRAM-based PIM techniques. PyDAM is open and freely available on GitHub. If you're interested in it, please use it and feel free to contribute to it. And an extended version of our conference paper is available on archive on this link where we discuss our framework in more detail. And I also describe PyDAM in more detail and give a tutorial on how to use the framework and the Safari Live seminar talk. Thank you very much for listening to my presentation. I'm now happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, Atavir. Are there any questions? Yes, one question. Hello.
Hello.
It's nice work. You showed the copying thing that I wanted to ask whether is it possible to do some other work in FPGA boards for that in memory computing?
Sorry, did you ask RL? Maybe I misheard you.
Like you showed that copying of data from one row to another row. Which was done from the one row of DRAM to another row of the DRAM in the same for same DRAM, right? So I was asking that apart from copying, is that possible? Is there any possibility of doing other kind of work like addition, some subtraction distincting in the DRAM of FPGA?
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's a good question. So I showed you the, in one of the slides, maybe I can go back to it. I was talking about our implementation of Rocco here. I talked about DRAM command sequences with violated timing parameters. So compute DRAM, a paper published on Micro 2019 demonstrated along with interim copy operations, both with vice and then all operations in DDR3 chips. The way they did it is they waited for a less amount of time between successive activate pre-charge and activate command. And that command sequence results in multiple rows to become activated instead of two. They observe three row activation. And when you activate three of the rows at the same time or in a quick succession, the resulting function you get on the bit line is, as Gerald described in the previous presentation, is like a majority of the three cells that are activated on those three rows. So short answer is yes, I think it's possible. The caveat is reliability is a problem. So majority operations, in contrast to Rocco operations, are they succeed with the less probability. So the authors of this micro paper observed that not all of the bit lines can perform this operation reliably, basically. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I'll go to that paper. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the question and thank you for the presentation, Atavir. Good job. Now we have the next presenter is again Geraldo. He's going to, I'm not going to introduce him in this time. As you know, he's a PhD student at the Safari Research Group. And yeah, now he's going to present another work.
Okay, I'm going to get started because I guess I was informed that you are a little bit behind together. So I'm going to throw, sorry, I'm going to go faster than usual in these slides and maybe skip some. But I guess I hope the overall key takeaways from this talk get across well. So again, this is a summary of two of our prior works that was published this year and in the end of last year. This talk is titled "Eterogeneous Data-Centric Architects for Modern Data-Intensive Applications: A Case Study for Image Learning and Databases." So again, the outline for this talk, first, I'm going to motivate a little bit why we need to do harder software design for processing memory. Then I'm going to talk about the works that employ such approach, which are called MESA and Polys. So we start with introduction. I guess I don't need to spend too much time here. Data movement is a problem. It happens for different reasons. Not enough locality, not enough memory bandwidth, or high average memory access time. Computer science solutions are failing to solve those problems. And in the end, as a solution, you have process memory that can have the high DRAM bandwidth or short-term access time. So when should we employ process memory, right, for which application? So many prior works have shown how to employ process memory for web processing, mobile workloads, neural networks, DNS sequence, databases, time series analysis, and many, many others. However, there is a common limitation of prior process, prior work or a pitfall that prior work can lead to or can can give the impression to. So process memory is not a one-size-fits-all solution. And process memory architecture has a lot of limitations in terms of what can be designed. So for example, if you take into account 3D-based process memory designs, you have limited area, you have thermal problems, you have limit power budget, lower clock frequencies. If you go for to the DRAMs, integrating computation and logic in a single DRAM on effect and processes really challenge. So all of these need to take into account when you're designing a process memory system. So you can fully leverage the potential of the overall architecture, right? So to avoid subpar performance for a process memory solution, we need to efficiently co-design hardware and software in order to to avoid process memory constraints. So here I have an example from one of our prior works that shows for many work, there are three workloads in the x-axis and different kernels for those workloads. And then we evaluate three different configurations, a CPU-only, a pin core, where we don't do harder software design, and a pin accelerator. And then you can see in the plot by doing harder software design, we can further gain performance on top of the process memory core design, the naive implementation, let's say, or the baseline and further improve the performance in terms of baseline. And this this is in terms of performance, but in terms of energies even further as our debate of a problem. And how you do harder software design for process memory is not much hard different than what you do for a general accelerator. And and in general, we follow a two-step approach in our works to do a harder software design for P. So let's say that you want to study a target application that you want to, you think that you can accelerate for a process memory. So the first thing that you do is to profile heavily profile and understand the characteristics of those applica, of that application into interest to understand the harder software requirements of that application, the performance bottlenecks that application is causing, causing in these baseline system that is going to execute and the sources of energy bottlenecks. And based on that knowledge that we gain in the first step, the insights in the second, in the first step, we then go and design algorithms and harder taking process memory into considerations. And in the end, you have a high performance and high energy efficient process memory architecture. So I'm going to illustrate how this is done with two application domains. So the first one is machine learning for edge devices. And the second one is hybrid transaction analytical database system for cloud processing. So starting with MESA, which is accelerator for Google neural network in the edge, in edge device. So really briefly, why should we do machine learning workloads on the edge devices? For varying reasons, because of in terms of privacy, the phone is in our pockets out in the cloud. Connectivity, if you don't have internet, you can still do inference. In terms of latency, you don't have the latency of going to the cloud anymore, right? The latency is much shorter and also the bandwidth is much higher. However, edge devices are quite limited in terms of power and computing resources. So based on that, many prior works or many companies have started developing the edge accelerators to do ML. For example, Apple has their A12 chip and in Google has the Google HTP. At the same time, there in terms of machine learning workflows or in particular neural networks, we have a lot of different models. We don't have only convolutions in neural networks anymore. We have LSTMs or we have RCNs or we have transducers. And this creates a problem because now we have, we have a single accelerator that is being catered for different machine learning models. So we take that edge HTP accelerator at Google and we machine learning models also running in Google, 24 of them. And we extensively profile them to understand how the Google HTP accelerator were executing over there. And so briefly, what is a Google HTP is a symbolic array, which has DRAM and array of MAC units and on-chip buffers, how it works. So we have the ML model stored in the DRAM. And it's the input activations and parameters are brought to the processing element array. In our case, the element array of the Google HTP that we consider was a 64 by 64 array. And the on-chip buffer was our four megabytes on-chip buffer. And we have a data flow also that maps the computation into the and orchestrated computation into the processing element array. So as I said, we analyzed 24 different machine learning workload for Google neural network models, six RNN transducers, thirteen convolution neural networks, two LSTMs, and three RCNs. And after we analyzing the, we analyze the performance and the energy of those 24 models running on the HTP, we conclude that the HTP suffer from three main challenges. The first one is that it operates significantly below its peak throughput. The second one is that operates significantly below its peak energy efficiency. And then it was handling memory quite poorly, even though it has a specialized data flow. So the question is where these problems are coming from, right? So then we went and started doing analysis of the software, the layers that were or the machine learning model that were being executed on the HTP. And then we observed some problems. The first one is that there is a diversity in 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 features across the different machine learning models, right? There is a variation across a model and across layers. So here, for example, I have different neural networks as dots. Each dot is a different layer and I have two metrics, parameter footprint in the x-axis and reuse in flops per byte in the y-axis. And you can see that this varies quite broadly for different neural network models, right? So we have layers like CNNs, there are CNNs that has high reuse and layers like LSTMs that does not have high, do not have high reuse but has a high parameter footprint. Likewise, when you look inside the single layer itself, we see a large variation behavior for a single model, but different layers of the same model. For example, here I have a CNN and then the accesses I have the different layers. And the y-axis, I have the number of multiply accumulate operations executed by that particular layer. And then you can see for this example, a variation of up to of 200 times across different layers. And if you consider another model, again, you see this large, and you pick another metric, we see a variation also in that metric. Like here, the flops per byte or reuse is varying for more than 244 times. So the overall conclusion is that the main problem of the that the HTP were suffering from that particular model is that there is heterogeneity that the accelerator was not catered for. So we have a monolithic accelerator that was designed for, probably for a particular type of neural networks. But now we have many different type of neural networks that you want to execute in that same accelerator. And that is causing the performance drawbacks, the energy drawbacks for the particular accelerator. So how can you solve this this problem, right, for 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 this HTP design? Then you propose this MESA framework. So the goal of this MESA framework is to design an efficient accelerator that can cater for different machine learning models, right? So the main idea here is that instead of designing a single big monolithic accelerator, we are going to have a framework that is going to have a combination of smaller accelerators and our scheduler that can map different layers for the most appropriate accelerator during the execution of the application. So just to picturally show it, here we have the HTP, we have different models executing a monolithic accelerator. It means that we're going to have different models as a nice runtime scheduler, which is going to decide which model should and which layer should execute in which accelerator. Their own time scheduler is a software runtime scheduler that is taking the characteristics of the accelerator and the characteristics of the layers, which both often can be known before the execution of the 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 application in completion time. Those workloads are quite regular. And then do the mapping between the layer and the accelerator itself during the the execution of the application, considering utilization, for example, or communication and all of that in our paper, I refer to that, I don't have a lot of time to go through it. And then in the end, you have the the layer mapping. So the question right now is how many accelerators do we need? And then the MESA framework tries to answer this question, right? All right, so we identified that even though we have 24 models and many, many, many different layers within those models, layer, the properties of those, the properties that matter for the accelerator design tends to group into different layer of layer families. So when you do this analysis and we have some metrics like parameter footprint, MAC utilization and reuse, we see two two main groups, broader groups of members of 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 layers, layers that are compute-centric and layers that are memory, data-centric or memory-centric. And we call them the divide, subdivide them into five different layers from from one to five. And then we take that information and we design what to call MESA G, which is a machine learning accelerator for those Google. which is a machine learning accelerator for those Google, for those models at Google. And then he designed three accelerators. They are called Pascal, Pavlov, and Jackpot. So briefly, the description of each one of them. So the Pascal accelerator is targeting the compute-centric layers that I showed previously. Mostly they are CNNs or RCNs. And it has a 32 by 32 processing element array size, 256 activation buffer, which is an eight-time reduction compared to the baseline HTP. And 128 parameter buffer, which is a 32 times reduction compared to the HTP. And we keep this accelerator in the CPU die or in the whole side, not inside memory because we don't, those applications don't necessarily have a lot of requirements of the bandwidth provide for any data processing. The second accelerator is called Pavlov, which caters for mostly data-centric LSTM layers. Since those layers does not have a lot of MAC intensity, though they don't do a lot of multiply accumulation operations, we design a much smaller processing element array size of eight by eight size. And we only have, we have a small activation buffer of 128 kilobytes. And we stream parameters directly from DRAM because the parameters for LSTMs are really, the size of the parameters is really large, so, and there is not much reuse. So there is no, does not make much sense buffering them because the buffer would need to be large. And in the end, you're not going to reuse the parameters at all. So you stream them directly from DRAM. And to support that streaming, you need to place this accelerator nearby, inside the DRAM chip itself. Otherwise, you cannot sustain the required memory throughput. And finally, we have Jackpot, Jackpot for non-LSTM data-centric layers. We have a little bit larger processing element array for Jackpot, is 16 by 16 because these applications do have some MAC intensity. We have 128 activation, kilobyte activation buffer and 128 kilobyte parameter buffer. And again, since the families of layers that Jackpot caters to are data-centric, we place it inside the 3D stack memory, the last layer of a 3D stack memory in our design. So overall, if you combine the area of all of those three accelerators, it is still smaller than the baseline Google HTP accelerator. So for more details about each accelerator and the data flow that we cater for each one of them, I invite you to check our paper. So we evaluate the energy and throughput utilization and area of MENSa G compared to the baseline HTP. So I'm going to briefly talk about the results here. So here I have energy and we have different layers in the X-axis and three baselines. The baseline HTP, the baseline HTP with a high bandwidth memory and the MENSa G solution. And the energies are breakdown, broken down into components of the subsystem. So overall, we see that we highly, MENSa G highly reduces the energy caused by parameter traffic and also the energy caused by the network on chip because we specialize the data flow and also we make use of process memory. And also, we can reduce dynamic energy overall compared to the baseline systems because we avoid over-provisioning for the size of the accelerator itself. We don't have such a large monolithic accelerator anymore. So overall, when you consider all of the layers and network and models that we have, MENSa G improves energy efficiency by three times compared to the baseline system. Briefly, also have the throughput analysis of those three systems for different layers. And we see that MENSa G also improves throughput by 3.1 times compared to the baseline system. So in conclusion, so the problem that we are having here is that we have many different network models and we have a single accelerator, right? And when you characterize this single accelerator for those different neural network models, we see that it suffers from low utilization, leading to sub-power throughput, energy efficiency problems, and also memory problems. And the insight from our, that we gain from our analysis is that the whole problem is that we have a monolithic design for the Google HTP, even though we have a heterogeneous, heterogeneous set of neural network models and layers. Based on that, we proposed the MENSa framework, which consists of a heterogeneous set of smaller accelerators that cater for different properties and also our runtime scheduler, our software scheduler that maps the layers to the particular accelerator. And then we evaluated and we see that improves performance and energy and also area and cost. So this was MENSa. We do, we repeat the similar procedure for another application, which is data, hybrid processing and transaction analytical databases. So the whole problem here is that you want to do real-time data analysis. So let's say that you have a self-driving car, you're having a bunch of cameras, you need to collect the data and make a decision during the execution of, in the quick time, right? So you're, you're collecting transitional data and then you need to do analytical on top of the data with a deadline or in real time. So this is quite a problem because if you don't do that analysis quick enough, the importance of the data is going to diminish, like you already hit the pedestrian and then like, what can you do now? To support this type of system, prior works have proposed hybrid transactional analytical processing systems, or H-Step, which, I'm sorry about that, that pretty much integrates in a single database minimum systems, transactional and analyticals. So in the end, you can support real-time data analysis. The ideal H-Step system should provide at least three key properties. It should provide workload-specific optimization, so transactional analytical should run as if they are running independent systems. It should provide data freshness and consistent guarantees so that the analytical processing engine should see the most up-to-date version of the data and the consistent view of the whole system. And it also should perform, so I mess up, performance isolation is the same first thing that I said, and workload-specific optimization. So transactional and analytical benefits from different data layouts, for example. And then you should provide the different data layouts as required for the particular either transactional analytical that is going to execute. However, achieving all of those three properties at the same time in a baseline system is really challenging. I don't, I, we are running out of time, but I'm going to briefly talk about the study that we can do. So we studied, there are too many points of, too many types of H-Step systems, what we call single instance and multiple instance systems. So single instance, both transactional and analytical around in the same replica. Why in a multiple instance, we have one replica for transactional and many replicas for analytics? And we extensively evaluate those two systems and we see that they suffer from two main problems. The first one is that the data freshness and consistency problem or mechanisms that current systems employ are quite costly and leads to our address reduction, both transactional and analytical throughput when both of them are executing at the same time. And also, the system fails to provide efficient performance isolation because of high memory, memory contention when you are both executing at the same time. We have in the paper a detailed characterization of all of them. But again, due to time, I'm going to skip this part over here, I reference you to our paper. So let me move this quicker. Okay, so let's get to the, to the problem and goals of this work. So the problem is that state-of-the-art H-Step system cannot achieve all of the three desired H-Step properties that you have in the system due to the cost of maintaining data freshness and consistency and due to contention in the, in the shared resources of the system. So our goal is to provide the system, again, doing hardware-software code design and leverage process memory in a way that you can address the system. And based on that, we propose Polynesia. So the key idea of Polynesia is to partition the computing resources. So, so, so both memory and computation elements into islands. And those islands are isolated for transactional or analytical. So we have, by isolating transactional data or transactional computation with using transactional islands to analytical computation using analytical islands, we can apply workload-specific optimizations to each island. We also can avoid the main memory contention. And we can design efficient data freshness and data consistence mechanisms while mitigating the high cost of data movement. And all of that is even as further possible by leverage processing memory solutions. So here I have a quick figure of our system. Or, so first, we have the transactional islands that uses a regular CPU system to execute transactional threads. And we have analytical island, which is placed inside the logical layer of a 3D stack memory. So the analytical island is constituted of analytical cores. So those are simple process memory cores and specialized hardware units to maintain both a high update, update, updates between transactional and analytical threads. So there are two mechanisms for that. One that gathers transactions data and ship them to analytical replica. And also the mechanism that applies those updates to the analytical replica itself and a mechanism to maintain consistency between transactional and analytical engines. So I would, I would go into details about the update propagation, but I think I'm already over time. So sorry for that again. All of that is in our work. I want to go to the evaluation. Okay, so we extensively evaluate this system using prior H-Step systems and against, using the G5 simulator. And our implementation again is available in our GitHub, so feel free to use it. And we compare it six different baselines using different consistency and data consistency and data freshening mechanisms in the baseline host CPU and also ideal system. So this is the, some end-to-end analysis that we have in our system. So in the X-axis, we have the number of transactions and the Y-axis, we have the normalized throughput. And basically, we see that by code designing hardware and software to avoid the cost of data, of consistency and freshness in your H-Step system, we can achieve, we can come within 8.5, we didn't, sorry, 8.4% of the ideal system that consists, maintaining consistency, freshness has zero cost. Also, by, even if you have a system that has high bandwidth, main memory bandwidth, this is not enough. We improve system performance by 63.8% by designing custom logic so we can efficiently do the data freshness and data consistency in your H-Step system. So also, again, we evaluate energy and we see that we improve energy compared to all of the baselines because we eliminate the costly DRAM access when you're doing computation. So in conclusion, the problem that you are trying to solve over here in this talk is that we have these H-Step systems, hybrid transactional analytical systems that need to do computation, analytical computation over some transactional data at some real time. However, that suffers, traditional systems suffer from data freshness problems, memory contention problems, and lack of performance isolation. To solve this problem, you want, we define the H-Step system into processing islands, which enable us to do workload-specific optimizations and to provide performance isolations to both transactional and analyticals. The key mechanism that we develop is called Polynesia, which is a process memory-based system that implement custom hardware for algorithms for data, data freshness and consistency and avoids the cost of data movement across transactional and analytical threads. Now, we extensively evaluate each steps, sorry, Polynesia. And we see that it provides a high transaction analytical throughput and reduces energy overall. So thank you so much. Sorry for rushing, but I guess with the time limitation.
Thank you, Geraldo. Are there any questions for Geraldo? Okay, I have a question for you. So these applications that you have presented here, how would you expect them to perform on a general-purpose architecture like UPMEMM that you're familiar with as well?
Yeah, so for the first one, MENSa, so Google neural networks are not concise. So they use float point operations. And the main, one of the main drawbacks of the UPMEMM system that it does not provide had their support for float point, so float point computation is emulated and the performance drops because of that. So the first one, I would not expect to execute so well on the UPMEMM system. The second one, the H-Step, I believe that it could highly benefit for the UPMEMM system because the, the pin core that we use are quite similar to the pin cores in the UPMEMM system itself. And the applying transactions over here, or the analytical that we are running over here are quite simple also. So it does not require, like for example, float point computations or multiplications, which are the main drawback of the UPMEMM system. So I guess, yeah, I guess database overall is a really good use case for, for the UPMEMB based system.
Thank you, Geraldo.
Thanks, Juan.
Okay, we have, our next presenter is Ivan Fernandez. Hopefully, he will be online.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Nice.
Well, please share your screen.
I guess you can already see.
Let me introduce you very quickly. Ivan Fernandez is a PhD student at the University of Malaga in Spain. And he collaborates with the Safari Research Group at ETH Zurich. Ivan received his bachelor's and master's degrees in computer engineering from the University of Malaga. And his research interests include time series analysis, processing in memory, and transprecision computing. Ivan, you can start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Juan, and welcome everyone to the presentation of NATSa, exploiting near data processing to accelerate time series analysis. Let's start with the executive summary. The problem is that time series analysis is bottlenecked by data movement in conventional hardware platforms. And the goal of this work is to enable high-performance and energy-efficient time series analysis for a wide range of applications. As contributions, we propose the first near data processing accelerator for time series analysis, which is based on metrics profile algorithm. NATSa evaluations show that it provides up to 14.2 times higher performance and consumes up to 27.2 times less energy than a DDR4 platform with eight out of four loads. And also, it outperforms an HBNNDP platform with 64 other cores by 6.3 times while consuming 10.2 times less energy. Here you can see the outline of the talk, so let's start with the motivation. Time series analysis has many applications like climate change, medicine, economics, signal processing, even astronomy, and many more. The two main primitives that we are interested in when performing time series analysis are motifs and discos. So given as large time series into sub-sequences, motif discovery focuses on finding similarities while discord discovery focusing on, focuses on finding anomalies. Let me show you a nice example of anomaly detection. Here we have a very regular time series in blue that has a very different subsequence over here. So if we use Euclidean distance to check what is the similarity between the different sub-sequences of this time series, we will obtain for those sub-sequences that are very similar to the rest ones, distances that are very close to zero. And for the subsequent that is very different to the rest one and its surrounding zone, we will obtain high distance values. So this is an example of a discord or an anomaly. The state-of-the-art tool to perform time series analysis is metrics profile. It is an algorithm and also an open source tool that is intended for those tasks to detect motif and discos. It is very easy to use because only as a user, you only need to provide the subsequent length. And let me give you a very high-level overview of how this algorithm works. So let's assume that you have an input time series and you already define a subsequent length that is m. So what this algorithm does is to create a matrix that is the one that's shown over here. And basically, each cell of this matrix contains the distance in Euclidean, using Euclidean distance with comparing a couple of sub-sequences that are indexed by the row and the column of the matrix. There is a problem and if the time series is quite large, the size of this matrix could be huge. And so what the algorithms usually do is to avoid storing it in memory. And instead of that, they store what they call the profile and the index vector. The profile and the profile vector basically stores the minimum value of each row of the matrix. This means that for every sub-sequence that we have in the time series, we store the minimum distance with respect to the other sub-sequences of the time series. Or in other words, what is the closest neighbor to this given subsequence. In the index vector, what we store is the position. In the index vector, what we store is the position of this neighbor with respect to the time series. If you want to know more details about the algorithm, please take a look to the paper. Nice. So screen is the state of the art CPU matrix profile implementation, but there are also GPU and heterogeneous CPU and GPU available. And what we do in this work is to characterize screen using an Interzone file KNL. To do so, we basically increase, we check the scalability of the algorithm by increasing the number of threads using two different memory technologies. And what we can see in this plot is that when we use a slower DDR4 memory, the performance of the algorithm doesn't scale beyond 32 threads. While if we move to a faster memory like the HBM1, we obtain higher speed. To further confirm this fact, we also build the roofline model of the, of the algorithm. And as you can see here, screen is placed in the left part of this plot, which means that its arithmetic intensity is quite low. Based on that, we conclude that screen is heavily bottlenecked by data movement. So far, I show you that time series analysis has many applications and it is bottlenecked in commodity systems by the memory. So the goal of this work is to enable high performance and energy efficient time series analysis for a wide range of applications by minimizing the overheads of data movement. And to this end, we propose NACA, the first near data processing accelerator for time series analysis that exploits series tag, HBM memories and specialized processing logic. Let's take a look to NACA design. From the high level perspective, NACA is designed to fully exploit the memory bandwidth of HBM and employ the required amount of computing resources to provide a balanced route. NACA consists of multiple processing units or PU's. Each PU includes energy efficient routing point units and device operators. And they are designed to compute batches of diagonals of the distance matrix following a vectorized approach. Let's talk about NACA integration in the system. In this figure, you can see how NACA can be used in a, in a system. So what we have is an HBM cube over here that is connected to NACA using an eight channel interface. NACA, as I said, is composed of several processing units. And both components are placed in the same silicon interface. Those PU's consist of four hardware components. First, we have a lot product units. Second, we have a distance compute unit. Third, we have a lot product update unit that using the dot product calculated from the dot product unit and adding a couple of terms, it uses most of the computation. And finally, we have a profile update unit that updates the profile and index vectors if needed. Additionally, we provide one kilowatt spare spot memory per PU to store temporal data. Next, let's take a look to how the execution flow happens in NACA. This execution flow comprises several steps. The first one is to calculate the dot product computation of the first element of the diagonal. Then we calculate the Euclidean distance of the first element of the diagonal. Next, we perform the first profile update if needed. Then we update the dot product for the next iteration. And we continue with the second and successive Euclidean distance computations. Finally, we perform the updates if they are needed. One key design point in NACA accelerator is to ensure load balancing among the different PU's. And to do so, we use a static partition schedule. We basically assign pairs of diagonals to each PU that sum the same number of cells to compute. Compute. Let me show you a nice example of how this can be done. So in this case, we have a couple of PU's, PU0 and PU1. And what we do is to assign PU0, the third and the last diagonal. And to PU1, the fourth and the ninth diagonal. We continue assigning diagonals in this way until we reach the full matrix schedule across the PU's. And if you send the number of elements that each PU has to compute are the same. So this is what we are interested in. Next thing to take into consideration is to providing a programming interface to the user. So basically, the user is responsible for allocating data in series and also providing the subsequent lengths. Then NACA will provide the user the computed profile and profiling these vectors as a result. Here you can see how NACA API looks like. That basically is comprised of a function that under the hood calculates the, pre-calulates the statistics, like the standard deviations and means for every subsequent of the time series. It allocates the private profiles that are needed for, for all the PU's of NACA. It calculates the scheduling, the static scheduling we just mentioned. It starts accelerator and finally it performs a final redaction. Now let's move to NACA evaluation. As methodology, we use several simulation environments. First, we have, we use an in-house integration of Zetzen and Remator to simulate the general purpose hardware platforms. And we use MacPad to obtain the area and power for the general purpose hardware platforms. Then we use the integration of Aladdin and G5 to obtain performance power and area of NACA. And finally, we obtain the memory side power consumption using micro power calculator. As hardware platforms, we define several representative simulated ones. We have DDR4 out of order, which basically comprises of eight out of order cores. We have DDR4 in order, which includes 64 in order cores. We have HBN out of order with eight out of order cores. HBN in order with 64 in order cores. And NACA that is composed of 48 PU's. Additionally, we evaluate NACA against real hardware platforms like an Interzone file KNL, an NVIDIA Tesla K40C, and an NVIDIA GTX 1050. First, let's take a look to the performance of NACA. To do so, we compare the performance of NACA with respect to general purpose hardware platforms. And in this figure, we plot the speedup of NACA for different time series lengths that are representative of most common applications. And as you can see, NACA in green is the one that provides the better performance. Concretely, NACA performs the baseline, which is DDR4 out of order by up to 14.2 times, 9.9 times on average. If we take a look to the power consumption, we can compare the power consumption from NACA with respect to the simulated and real hardware platforms. In this figure, you can see what are the power requirements in terms of bus of all the related platforms. And as we can see here, NACA is the one that requires the least amount of power. One thing that is worth to mention is that most of the NACA's power is consumed by memory. Then we evaluate and compare the energy consumption of NACA with respect to simulated and real hardware platforms for a particular and given executor. In this case, instead of using bots, we measure energy in George. And as you can see here, NACA is also the one that provides the least amount of energy that is required. Concretely, NACA reduces the energy consumption by up to 27.2 times over DDR4 out of order by up to 10.2 times over HBN in order and by up to 1.7 times over the NVIDIA Tesla K40C. Finally, we compare the area of NACA with respect to the simulated and real hardware platforms. And as you can see here, in this plot that is up to scale, NACA is the one that requires the least amount of area. And it is worth to mention that NACA is built using 45 nanometer technology node. And this, this is the platform that, this is, NACA is using a bigger technology node than the other platform. So even, even this fact, it is, it is the one that requires the least area. So let's finish the presentation with the security summary. The problem that this, this work tries to solve is that time series analysis is bottlenecked by data movement in conventional hardware platforms. The goal is to enable high performance and energy efficient time series analysis for a wide range of applications. And to this end, we propose the first near data processing accelerator for time series analysis based on the matrix profile algorithm. NACA evaluations show that it provides up to 14.2 times higher performance and consumes up to 27.2 times less energy than a DDR4 platform with eight out of order cores. And it also performs an HBNNDP platform with 64 in order cores by 6.3 times while consuming 10.2 times less energy. So that is all from my side. Thanks a lot for your attention and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you, Ivan. Very efficient. Are there any questions for Ivan? Okay, I'll have a question for you. So NACA is very specialized for time series analysis, right? But in the end, it has certain components that could be useful for other applications as well. Let's say, assuming that you can make minimal changes to the design, what other applications could be accelerated with this type of accelerator?
So thanks a lot for the question, Juan. And yeah, this is a quite a good question. The thing is that NACA is basically using routing point operations to perform like for example, the dot product and, and the distance calculation. So whatever application that follows a similar sliding window pattern and is based on routing point operations would be a good candidate to be, I mean, to be explored and think about what are the modifications that if application, if application has a similar pattern would be, would be, the modification won't be very dramatic, let's say. So this kind of application will be good candidates.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you, Ivan.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go with the next presenter. I think it's Nika. Are you there, Nika?
Yeah, hi Juan.
Okay, great. Please share your slides. Nika Mansurighiassi, she is a PhD student at the Safari Research Group. She has worked on system design for emerging technologies, genomic applications, and near data processing approaches in the storage and main memory systems. Nika, whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Okay, do you hear me and do you see the screen well?
Yeah, everything works fine.
Okay, thanks Juan. So, and thank you for the introduction. Hello, everyone. Today, I'm going to introduce Genstore, a high performance and storage processing system for genome sequence analysis. Okay, so genome sequence analysis is critical for many applications such as personalized medicine, outbreak tracing, and evolutionary studies. Genome sequencing machines extract the smaller fragments of the original DNA sequence known as reads. So read mapping is the first key step in genome sequence analysis that aligns reads to potential matching locations within the reference genome. And for each matching location, the alignment step finds the degree of similarity between the read and a reference by calculating alignment score. So calculating alignment score requires computationally expensive approximate string matching or ESM to account for differences between the read and the reference genome that may occur due to sequencing errors and genetic variations. So read mapping performs alignment on large genomic data sets containing millions of reads. Therefore, read mapping is both computationally expensive and increases high data movement overhead from storage. There's been significant effort into improving read mapping performance through efficient heuristics, hardware accelerators, and various filters that prune these that do not require expensive computation. And while these approaches address the computational overhead in read mapping, none of them alleviate data movement overhead from storage whose impact becomes even larger when the computation overhead gets alleviated. So our key idea is to filter reads that do not require expensive alignment computation in the storage system to fundamentally reduce data movement overhead of read mapping. Examples of reads that do not require costly alignment step are exactly matching reads to the reference genome that do not need approximate string matching performed during alignment and non-matching reads that do not have any potential matching location in the reference genome and can skip the alignment step. However, filtering reads in a modern SSD can be challenging due to different behavior across read mapping workloads and limited resources available in the SSD. By addressing these challenges, we propose Genstore, the first storage processing system designed for genome sequence analysis to reduce both computation and data movement overhead. Genstore provides high performance and energy benefits compared to state-of-the-art hardware and software baselines. So that was the summary of my talk. Let's start with the background of read mapping, so we can dive into the talk in more detail. Mapping reads to reference genome requires expensive computation on large data sets. The search space in the reference genome can be very large. For example, for a human reference genome, it contains more than 3 billion characters. Therefore, read mappers typically use an index of the reference genome to reduce the search space. The index contains unique k-length sub-sequences called kamers extracted from the reference genome and the locations of these kamers in the reference genome. So read mapping is a three-step process. And the state-of-the-art read mappers usually involve several heuristics to reduce the cost of expensive alignment computation. In the first step called seeding, the mapper extracts kamers from the read. So the goal is to determine potential matching locations or seeds in the reference genome. And to do that, the mapper extracts some kamers from the read and looks at the kamers in the index. And in case the kamers hit in the index, the mapper marks the locations of those kamers in the read as potential matching locations or seeds. So instead of looking at the whole reference, we can only look at these small seeds, these candidate locations. And in the second step, to further prune the potential locations to check or to prune some seeds, seeding, seed filtering or chaining gets performed to further prune some of these seeds. And it is done usually with the less computationally expensive approximation of alignment score. And finally, the third step is alignment to determine the exact differences between read and the reference genome for the reads that pass through the second stage. So if a read does not have any seeds remained after the second stage, it gets filtered. Otherwise, it goes to this third stage, which requires the expensive approximate string matching to find the exact differences. So we find, we perform experimental studies to understand the potential of efficient in storage filters for improving read mapping performance. And we perform a case study on real genomic read data set and various read mapping systems, both hardware and software, and state-of-the-art SSD configurations. And based on our motivational analysis, we conclude that the ideal in storage filter significantly improves performance by both reducing computation overhead and reducing data movement overhead. Filtering outside SSD, on the other hand, provides lower performance benefits since it does not reduce data movement overhead and must compete with read mapping for other resources in the system such as main memory bandwidth or computation resources. So a hardware accelerator mapper reduces the computation bottleneck, which in turn makes IO a larger bottleneck in the system and therefore makes the stronger case for filtering reasons inside SSD possible. So motivated by these observations, our goal in this design, in this work is to design a storage filter for genome sequence analysis and a cost-effective banner. And we have three key design objectives in mind. First is that a system should provide high in storage filtering performance to overlap the filtering that is happening in the SSD with the read mapping that is happening either in the software system or like in a software-based read mapper in a CPU or an accelerator. So wherever the mapper is happening, the filtering, the goal is to overlap and hide the latency inside the SSD. So, and the second goal is that the design should support reads with different properties and different degrees of genetic variation. And thirdly, it should require significantly, it should not require significantly high hardware overhead. So low costness is the second, third goal. And to this end, we propose Genstore, which is the first in storage processing system designed for genome sequence analysis. And the key idea is to filter reads that do not require alignment inside the storage system and send the unfiltered data to the host system for further processing. However, filtering reads in a modern SSD, as we discussed, can be challenging due to different behavior across read mapping workloads and the limited hardware resources available in the SSD. So let's take a look at filtering opportunities based on the input reads. So sequencing machines typically produce one of two kinds of reads. Short reads that are highly accurate but short, for example, up to few hundreds of DNA characters. And long reads that are less accurate and long from hundreds to millions of DNA characters. Based on these, we leverage two filtering opportunities. First, we can filter exactly matching reads, which are reads that match exactly to one or more sub-sequences of their reference genome and therefore do not require approximate string matching during alignment. And based on simple computations, basically can be filtered inside the SSD. And examples of these exactly matching reads can frequently occur in short read sets with low sequencing errors and also low genetic variation. with low sequencing errors and also low genetic variation. Second, we can filter non-matching reads, which are reads that do not have any potential matching locations in the reference genome and can skip the alignment step because there is, from the second step of read mapping, they already don't have any location to go through the third. So they can also be filtered. So such reads, non-matching reads, can frequently occur in long read sets with very high sequencing errors and shorter or longer read sets that have high degree of genetic variation and basically would align to no place in the reference genome. So by thorough analysis of mapping processes, reads with different degrees of genetic variation and different properties, we designed two low-costed storage filters. GenStore EM for filtering exactly matching reads and GenStore NM for filtering the non-matching reads. So let's take a closer look at GenStore EM. GenStore EM accelerates read mapping by using an efficient in storage filter to filter reads that have at least one exactly matching location in the reference genome via simple operations without requiring expensive alignment. So the key challenge, however, in designing GenStore EM is the large number of random accesses to large data structures inside the SSD. And this is challenging because NAND flash memory exhibits poor performance for random access reads and there's limited DRAM capacity available in the SSD, which is relatively small compared to the size of data structures that need to be accessed. So to reduce the number of accesses per each read, we introduced the concept of read-sized kamers. Therefore, instead of having separate kamers extracted from the read, we can consider the whole read as one kmer, so we can have a read-length kmer. So then we can have for each read only one index lookup per read. So now that we only have one index, one access per read, we can avoid also random accesses to the index by introducing sorted index of read-sized kamers. So this sorted index allows finding exact matches via sequential scanning of the read sets and the index. So I showed the key idea of GenStore EM with a simplified example in which each short read consists of 10 characters, but in reality, that can be a few hundred characters. So here we have this tenmer that is like one read. So suppose we have two data structures. One is a sorted read table, each entry of which stores a read and its unique ID and a sorted kmer index, which contains all unique read-sized kamers extracted from the reference genome, along, again, with the location of the kamers in the reference genome. And each data structure is sorted by read and kmer in alphabetical order. So we sequentially scan through these data structures in three different ways based on the comparison result of the current read and kmer. So first, when the current read and kmer are identical, we record the read as an exactly matching read that can be filtered for the read mapping process and then we move to the next element in both arrays. And if the read is alphabetically larger than the kmer, we conclude that a kmer does not match any read and go to the next element in the index, so we can examine the next kmer. And finally, if the kmer is alphabetically larger than the read, we conclude that the read does not match any kmer in the index and need to be sent to the full read mapping process because we've been sequentially scanning. So if there was any match, we would have found it by now. So, okay, that's a non-matching read. So then we go to the next element in the reads that are structured so that we can check the next one. So using this technique, GenStore EM avoids random accesses and performs filtering using only a simple low-cost logic. Despite the key benefits of the sorted read-sized kmer index, the index actually takes up a larger space. For example, for humans, it can take up to 126 gigabytes to index it with such like large kamers due to the large number of unique read-sized kamers. So we further reduce the overhead of GenStore EM by replacing read-sized kamers with a strong hash of each read that can act as sorting criterion and the fingerprint of each entry. So using strong hash values instead of read-sized kamers, we can reduce the size of the index by 3.9 times. While still this index is larger than a baseline kmer index used in conventional read mappers, our proposal is feasible for in storage processing due to large capacity and high internal bandwidth of modern NAND flash-based SSD. So basically, that is a solution tailored for this architecture. So now I show the overall operational flow of GenStore EM. We've sorted read table and sorted kmer index in the NAND flash memory, distributed across channels and dies. And since they're evenly distributed across channels, dies and planes, we can leverage the full internal bandwidth of the SSD. And then we have also the comparator logic located on the SSD controller. So GenStore EM consists of two steps. Step one, reads the two data structures from NAND flash chips to the SSD's internal diagram in a batch manner. And step two performs exact match filtering within each read batch using only simple comparator logic. Step one and two are performed in pipeline manner. And during filtering, since this is working in a pipeline manner for different batches, GenStore EM sends the unfiltered reads to the host system to do the full read mapping when the read detects that unfiltered reads for the batch. And meanwhile, for the next batch, GenStore can filter the reads again. So it can fully work in the pipeline manner. So now let's take a closer look at GenStore NM. So using chaining, GenStore chaining or seed filtering, which was the second step of read mapping that we discussed, it filters most of the non-matching reads, which are reads that would not align to any sub-sequences in the reference genome. And recall that chaining filter calculates similarity score for each read, which is called chaining score, and it filters reads with no high-scoring potential matching location. So calculating a chaining score in SSD is challenging because finding the best chaining score requires performing many iterations of dynamic programming, a dynamic programming algorithm for all seeds within a read. And this can actually particularly be challenging for long reads since they can have a very large number of kamers, like up to a few millions. So to reduce the cost of chaining, GenStore NM uses a lightweight chaining filters that selectively performs chaining on the reads with a small number of seeds and directly sends reads that require more complex chaining to the host system. This idea is based on our observation from analyzing the wide range of real-world genomic data sets. So this figure here shows alignment probability of a read in a long read set to sub-sequences in a reference genome as a function of number of kamers per read. So we observed that reads with sufficiently large number of seeds are very likely to align to sub-sequences in a reference genome. And such reads can directly be sent to CPU or like an accelerator for full read mapping and bypassing the in-storeage filter because anyways, with high probability, they will not be filtered. So we observed that reads with sufficiently large, yeah, numbers, so they can easily be already bypassing. And then we conclude that the selective lightweight chaining approach can filter many non-aligned reads without costly hardware resources in the SSD. And for more details about it, please refer to our paper. Now I go to our results. So we evaluate the following systems. Base is a state-of-the-art software or hardware read mappers for both short and long reads and GenStore, which is base-integrated with GenStore inside the SSD. And we evaluate these mappers and systems with various SSD configurations, a low-end, a medium-end and a high-end SSD. And for other details about our methodology, again, please refer to the paper. We analyze the benefits of GenStore EM for a 22 gigabyte short read set where 80% of reads exactly match some sub-sequences in the reference genome and can be filtered. So that typically happens in, let's say, a human data set. So we showed the benefits of GenStore and hardware and software mappers. So GenStore provides up to 2.5 times the speedup compared to software baseline and up to 3.3 times speedup compared to the hardware baseline. And it provides an average 3.9 times energy reduction. And we also analyze the benefits of GenStore NM for a 12 gigabyte long read set with very high degree of genetic variation compared to their reference genome, where 99.7% of reads do not match any sub-sequences in the reference. And we showed the benefits of GenStore on software and hardware read mappers. And I showed that it provides up to 27.9 times the speedup compared to the software baseline and up to 19.2 times the speedup compared to the hardware baseline and on average, 27.2 times energy reduction. So we find area and power values of GenStore by synthesizing GenStore EM and NM using 65 nanometer technology node and find that for an eight-channel SSD, the area of GenStore is 0.2 millimeter square and power is 26.6 what? Milliwatts, sorry. So by scaling the area to lower technology nodes, we observed that the area overhead of GenStore is 0.006% of an Intel processor and less than 9.5% of only the three ARM cores that are presenting a SSD controller. So let me briefly talk about their results that are included in the paper before, like other results that are included in the paper before I conclude. So these results include the following: effect of read data set features and performance. For example, the data size, which we scale up to 440 gigabytes. The filter ratio, basically how many percent of the reads in the data set can be filtered. Performance benefits of an implementation of GenStore outside SSD. In some cases, we observed that it actually provides benefits because of its more efficient streaming accesses and also, right, so because of that it provides benefits for some cases, but it significantly provides lower benefit compared to GenStore implementation inside the SSD. And also, we provide more detailed characterization of non-matching reads, basically when they happen and what are the scenarios that they happen and by what degree of, I don't know, filtering is possible across different read mapping use cases and also species. So now let me conclude by giving the summary of this talk. So there's been significant effort into improving read mapping performance through efficient heuristics, hardware accelerators and various filters that prune these that do not require expensive computation. And while these approaches address the computation overhead in read mapping, none of them alleviate data movement overhead from storage because impact become even larger when the computation overhead gets alleviated. And our goal is to improve the performance of genome sequence analysis by efficiently reducing unnecessary data movement from the storage system. And the key idea is to filter reads that do not require expensive ESM computation in the storage system to fundamentally reduce data movement overhead. However, filtering reads inside the SSD is challenging because read mapping workflows, as we saw, can exhibit different behavior for different types of read data sets and their limited hardware, available hardware resources in the storage system such as the limited DRAM capacity that we talked about. So to this end, we propose GenStore, the first in storage processing system designed for genome sequence analysis to reduce both computation and data movement overhead. And GenStore provides high performance and energy benefits compared to state-of-the-art hardware and software baselines. So that concludes my talk. Thank you very much for listening and I can take any questions if there is any.
Thank you very much. Nika, are there any questions in the room? Okay, I just want to ask very quick question, Nika. So you focus on genome sequence analysis. Are there any other stages of the genomic pipeline or bioinformatics pipeline that you think could be a good match for in storage processing?
Right, yeah, that's a very good question. So another step that we're interested into looking at are steps before even read mapping because in some cases, you might even not know what reference genome you should pick to align your sample to. So you need to first do some metagenomics classification to figure out, basically, from pool a very large set of references, select some relevant references so you actually can do read mapping on. So which is, as I said, refers to as like metagenomics classification, which is again a very important step. And it's, we predict that would also be very beneficial to look into those steps to even, because that even deals with larger scale data, so. Very excited to look into that too.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much, Nika.
Sure, thanks Juan. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, yeah, it's only two presentations left. The next presenter is Christina. Are you there, Christina?
Hi Juan, can you hear me? Hi, everyone.
Yes, we can hear you. Nice to see you as well. You can share your slides. Christina is a PhD student in the School of Electrical and Computer Engineering at the National Technical University of Athens. She's working in the computing systems laboratory and is also an affiliated researcher with the Safari Research Group. Her research interests lie in the intersection of computer architecture and high-performance computing and specifically, her research focuses on the hardware-software co-design of emerging applications, including graph processing, pointer chasing data structures, machine learning workloads and sparse linear algebra. Christina will be joining the University of Toronto this fall for a postdoc position. When you're ready, Christina, go ahead.
Sure, thank you for the intro. That's all. Hi, everyone. So in this talk, I will introduce SPARSPY, the first sparse matrix vector multiplication library for real processing memory architectures. In this work, we designed 25 efficient sparse matrix vector multiplication kernels for real processing memory systems. And our library is open source, is publicly available on GitHub. And we provide the first extensive study of the SPNV kernel on the first real-world processing memory system. Our study leads to many recommendations for architecture software designers of PIM systems. So let's start with the motivation of this work. Sparse matrix vector multiplication is a fundamental linear algebra kernel lies at the heart of many important applications from the scientific computing, machine learning and graph analytics domain. However, in commodity systems like CPUs and GPUs, it has been repeatedly reported to achieve only a small fraction of the peak performance and it is primarily bottlenecked by the memory bandwidth of the system. At the same time, several main factors have already started to commercialize near-bank process memory or PIM architectures. A PIM system consists of multiple PIM-enabled memory modules connected to a host CPU via common channel-based connections. Its PIM-enabled memory module supports several PIM cores and its PIM core is located close to DRAM part. As a result, real PIM systems can provide high levels of parallelism, low memory access latency, large aggregate memory bandwidth, thereby being a very good fit to accelerate the SPNV kernel. A few real near-bank PIM architectures are Samsung's VM DRAM, SK Designix and the UPMAN PIM system. To this end, we make two key contributions in this work. First, we designed SPARSPY, the first SPNV library for real PIM architectures. We proposed 25 efficient SPNV kernels supporting several compressed matrix storage formats, data types, data partition techniques, load balancing schemes and synchronization approaches in order to cover a wide variety of matrices and applications. And second, we conducted comprehensive study of the popular SPNV kernel on the first commercially available real PIM system, the UPMAN PIM system. Our characterization study includes a wide range of sparse matrices with diverse characteristics and comparisons to state-of-the-art CPU and CPU systems. Our analysis provides recommendations for software system and hardware designers. So let's first take a look on our proposed SPNV kernel. The end to SPNV execution on a real PIM system can be broken down in four steps. First, the time to load the input vector into the DRAM banks of PIM-enabled memory. Second, the time to execute the SPNV kernel on the PIM cores. Third, the time to retrieve from the DRAM banks to the host CPU partial results for the output vector. And fourth, the time to merge partial results and assemble the final output vector on the host CPU. Our evaluated system does not have the PIM-enabled memory as the main memory of the system and thus we need to load the input vector to PIM-enabled memory modules. However, our kernel limitations would be the same and can be applied to a near-bank PIM architecture where the PIM-enabled memory modules constitute the main memory of the system. To parallelize the SPNV kernel, we support two general types of data partition techniques. First, we provide a 1D partitioning technique where the matrix is horizontally partitioned across PIM cores. Second, we provide a 2D partitioning technique where the matrix is partitioned in two d-tiles. The number of tiles is equal to the number of PIM cores used. With the 1D partitioning technique, almost the entire SPNV computation is performed using the PIM cores since PIM cores directly compute the final elements for the output vector. However, the input vector needs to be replicated at each DRAM bank of PIM-enabled memory and thus the number of copies of the input vector that is transferred to the PIM-enabled memory through the narrow memory pass is equal to the number of PIM cores used. With the 2D partition, we aim to strike a balance between computation and data transfer cost because only a subset of the elements of the input vector is copied into each DRAM bank of each PIM core. Therefore, the number of copies of the input and output vectors that are transferred to PIM-enabled memory through the narrow memory pass depends on the number of ethical partitions used. In the 1D partitioning technique, we provide various load balancing schemes across multiple PIM cores for the four most widely used compressed matrix storage formats. For CCR and P4 formats, we load balance either the number of rows or the number of non-zero elements across PIM cores. For VCR and DCO formats, we load balance either the number For VCSR and BQ formats, we load balance either the number of blocks or the number of non-zero elements across PIM cores. However, the load balancing depends on the characteristics of each compressed format. For example, in the CSR format, since the matrix is stored in row order, the load balancing of the non-zero elements across PIM cores is performed at a row grand ladder. Instead, in the Q format, the matrix is stored in non-zero element order, and load balancing of the non-zero elements can be performed by splitting one row across two neighboring PIM cores, thereby providing a near-perfect non-zero element balance. Similarly, in this setup, load balancing is performed at a block or row grand ladder. In the two-dipartition technique, we support three schemes. In the equally-sized scheme, the two d tiles are statically created to have the same height and width. This way, the subset of the elements for the input and output vector have the same sizes across all PIM cores. However, this scheme has high non-zero element imbalance across the PIM cores due to creating static partitions on a very sparse matrix. In the equally-wide schemes, the two d tiles have the same width and variable height. For each vertical partition of the matrix, we load balance the number of non-zero elements across the tiles of the same vertical partition. And in this scheme, we can provide high non-zero element balance across the PIM cores of the same vertical partition. And finally, we have also experimented with the variable-sized scheme where the two d tiles have both variable width and height. We load balance the number of non-zero elements both across the vertical partitions and also across the tiles of the same vertical partition. This way, we provide high non-zero element balance across all PIM cores. And finally, since real PIM architectures can support multi-threaded PIM cores in both the one-dip and the two-dipartition techniques, we support various load balancing schemes and synchronization approaches among threads of a single multi-threaded PIM core. Overall, SPARSPY provides nine one-dipartition kernels and sixteen two-dipartition kernels, and it supports a wide range of data types, including both low-precision integer and high-precision flow data types. Let's now take a look on the most important key takeaways of our analysis. This is the real UP-MEM PIM system that we use in our evaluation. It includes 20 UP-MEM PIM teams connected to a whole CPU having in total 2,560 PIM cores. Each PIM core can support up to 24 threads. We can access data from a local 64-megabyte DRAM bank. In our evaluation, we have a wide variety of sparse matrices. And when the standard deviation of the non-zero elements across the rows and the columns of the matrix is low, the matrix is referred to as regular. However, when the standard deviation of the non-zero elements across the rows and the columns of the matrix is high, the matrix becomes very irregular. It has a power-law distribution and it is referred to as scale-free matrix. Let's examine only the kernel time of the SPNV execution. So in this experiment, we compare the four compressed matrix formats by normalizing their performance to that of the CSR format. In the one-dipartition kernels, we find that in scale-free matrices, the Q and BQ formats significantly outperform CSR and BCSR formats respectively. And this is because Q and BQ formats can provide higher non-zero element balance across PIM cores because CSR and BCSR formats are limited to perform the load balancing at the row and block or row grand laddery respectively. Similarly, in the two d equally-sized kernels, even though all the compressed matrix formats have the same non-zero element balance across the PIM cores because we have a static partitioning, the non-zero element balance across multiple threads of the same multi-threaded PIM core is affected by the compressed matrix format used. And as a result, Q and BQ formats outperform CSR and BCSR formats in scale-free matrices by providing high non-zero element balance across multiple threads of the same multi-threaded PIM core. Finally, in the two d equally-wide and variable-sized partitioning schemes, we find that Q and BQ formats significantly outperform CSR and BCSR formats across all evaluated matrices, both in regular and scale-free matrices. This is because Q and BQ formats can provide high non-zero element balance across multiple PIM cores and across multiple threads within a PIM core. Overall, our main key takeaway is that the compressed matrix format used to store the sparse matrix determines the data partitioning across the DRAM banks of PIM-enabled memory, and it affects the load balance across the PIM cores with the corresponding performance implications. Therefore, we recommend software designers to propose compressed data structures for sparse kernels that can be effectively partitioned across thousand of DRAM banks with the goal of providing high computation balance across the PIM cores and also across the thread within its PIM core. Then we characterize the end-to-end SPNV execution including the data transfer costs for the input and the output vectors. In this experiment, we evaluate the scalability of all data partitioning techniques as the number of PIM cores increases and the performance is normalized to that with 256 PIM cores. We find that the scalability of the one-dipartition technique is limited by the low data transfers because the amount of bytes that is transferred to the PIM-enabled memory modules for the input vector grows linearly with the number of PIM cores used. We find that the one-dipartition kernels are bottlenecked by the high data transfer cost to broadcast and replicate the whole input vector into each DRAM bank of all the PIM cores used. To this end, we suggest hardware and system designers to optimize the broadcast collective in data transfers to PIM-enabled memory in order to minimize the overhead of copying the input data into all the DRAM banks of the PIM system. We also find that in two d equally-sized scheme, the kernel time limits scalability. Specifically, the kernel time of the two d equally-sized scheme is limited by only one PIM core or only a few PIM cores which are assigned to the static two d tile with the largest number of non-zero elements. And we find that the scalability of the two d equally-wide and two d variable-sized kernel is limited by the retrieve time to transfer results for the output vector back to the whole CPU. These schemes are severely bottlenecked by the high amount of padding with empty bytes that is performed in the parallel data transfers to retrieve the results for the output vector. In our evaluated system, our evaluated system supports a parallel data transfers at rank granularity, meaning among 64 PIM cores. And therefore, a high amount of padding with zero bytes, with empty bytes, is performed in the retrieved data transfers, which accounts approximately the 88% of the data transferred from the PIM-enabled memory to the whole CPU. And as a result, we conclude that the two d equally-wide and two d variable-sized partitioning schemes require fine-grained parallel data transfers at DRAM bank granularity, having zero padding, to be supported in the PIM system in order to achieve high scalability and high performance. To this end, we suggest hardware and system designers to optimize the gather collective operation from PIM-enabled memory to the whole CPU and provide parallel data transfers at DRAM bank granularity in order to significantly minimize the overheads of retrieving the final output results to the whole CPU. And finally, when we compare then to enter the performance of all the data partitioning techniques, we find that the equal-sized two-dipartition technique performs best in regular matrices, while the one-dipartition technique performs best in scale-free matrices. However, in all sparse matrices used in our evaluation, the best performance is achieved using a much smaller number of PIM cores than the available PIM cores of the system. There are many idle cores in the system because the best performing SPNV execution is a trade-off between computation and data transfer costs. Overall, we find that the expensive data transfers to and from the PIM-enabled memory, which are performed via the narrow memory pass, impose significant performance overhead to the end-to-end SPNV execution. And therefore, it is very hard to fully exploit all the available PIM cores of the system. To this end, we recommend software, hardware and system designers to provide high-speed communication channels and optimize libraries in data transfers to and from PIM-enabled memory modules to provide hardware support to effectively overlap the computation with the data transfers in the PIM system and also to integrate the PIM-enabled memory modules to be the main memory of the system in order to avoid the low data transfers in the input data. In our paper, we compare also the SPNV execution on the UP-MEM system with that of a common CPU system and a common GPU system. In the GPU system, we also account for the time to transfer one instance of the input vector to the GPU global memory and also the time to retrieve the final output vector to the whole CPU. Common CPU and GPU systems are processors and existent with high computation capabilities. In contrast, real PIM systems are memory-centered existents with high bandwidth capabilities. So when we consider only the actual kernel time without accounting for the data transfer cost for the input and the output vectors, we find that the SPNV kernel execution on a real PIM system achieves a much higher fraction of the available peak performance compared to that of the CPU and the GPU system. This means that in the SPNV execution of the PIM system, we have a much higher resource utilization and we have better, a higher total cost of founders. Instead, when we consider then to enter SPNV execution including the data transfer overheads for the input and the output vectors, the CPU system performs best. However, we expect that PIM systems will be better in the near future and we expect that the data transfer cost will be lower. For example, by integrating the PIM-enabled memory modules to be the main memory of the system or by providing hardware support to overlap the computation with the data transfers in order to hide their latency. Please refer to our archive paper for many more key insights. In conclusion, sparse matrix vector multiplication is a fundamental linear algebra kernel. However, in commodity processors and existents like CPU and GPUs, it is highly bottlenecked by the data movement between processor and memory. Real near-bank PIM system can tackle the data movement problem by placing low-area, low-power cores very close to the DRAM banks. And therefore, PIM systems can provide high levels of parallel large aggregate memory bandwidth, thereby being a very good fit to accelerate the SPNV kernel. To this end, we have designed the first open-source SPNV library for real PIM system, which is called SPARSPY, and it is publicly available at the GitHub link at the end of this slide. And we also provide the first comprehensive characterization study of 25 SPNV kernels on the first real PIM architecture. Our goal provides new insights and accommodations for software designers and hardware architects in order to improve multiple aspects of future PIM software and hardware. For more details on our work, we invite you to read our full archive paper. Thank you for listening and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Christina. Any question?
Hi, nice presentation.
Hi.
So I have one question. Maybe it is a little different from your work, but what I wanted to ask is, like, you showed that PIM-enabled memory, right?
Mm-hmm.
Even memory. So can I consider that block RAM? Considering that FPGA perspective, a block RAM and a logic in the PL part? So can I consider these two as a PIM-enabled memory or the processing near memory? If, let's say, I have designed that processing part in that using PL logic and using block RAM for the memory. So can I consider that one as a processing near memory?
So the main characteristics of the evaluated system that we have as our baseline model is that each core can access data located in the local DRAM bank. There is no shared memory module. This system is a highly distributed model. So each core can access data only located in the local DRAM bank. So we can consider any architecture that has a similar characteristics as a distributed model that I described in the paper.
Okay, thank you.
So given that architectures, so let me clarify that. So if you look at the PIM-enabled memory here in the blue rectangle, you can see that we have a PIM core that can access data located in the local DRAM bank. So you can imagine that all PIM architectures that have a similar model, they are very, they are highly distributed and each core access data in a local memory. All these architectures have a similar design with the baseline design that we assume in architecture. And in that sense, SPARSPY can be supported and can be used in that, in those PIM architectures.
Okay, thank you.
The main contribution of this work is the data partitioning and effective data partitioning across the memories, across the DRAM banks.
Okay, thank you for the question and thank you, Christina, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are approaching to the end. Now, I'm going to present a different work. Can you guys help me? Okay, yeah, I hope you all can see the slides. I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to start the presentation now. The work I'm going to present has the title "Machine Learning Training on a Real Processing in Memory System." This is a work, it's a collaboration. Okay, I will, I will start again. This is the work titled "Machine Learning Training on a Real Processing in Memory System." This is a work that we have developed in this Safari Research Group in collaboration with the UP-MEM company. And let's start with an executive summary. Training machine learning algorithms is computationally expensive and frequently memory-bound due to repeatedly accessing large training datasets. In that sense, we think that memory-centric computing systems, that are systems with processing in-memory capabilities can alleviate this data movement bottleneck. And as we are discussing today, there are real-world PIM systems that are becoming a reality, are starting to be manufactured and commercialized. And the first one of them was the UP-MEM PIM architecture. Our goal in this work is to understand the potential of modern general-purpose PIM architectures to accelerate machine learning training. So main contributions of our work are PIM implementation of several classic machine learning algorithms such as linear regression, logistic regression, decision tree and K-means clustering, the word look characterization of these implementations in terms of accuracy, performance and scaling, and the comparison to their counterpart implementations on CPU and GPU. We perform the experimental evaluation on a real-world system with more than 2,500 PIM cores and 158 gigabytes of PIM-enabled memory, of DRAM memory. The old work results in some new observations and insights. For example, ML training in PIM systems benefits from fixed-point representations, quantization and hybrid precision implementations. Complex activation functions, for example, sigmoid, can take advantage of lookup tables when these operations are not natively supported by the hardware. The data can be placed and laid out in the PIM core for the PIM cores to access the nearby memory banks in streaming, thus maximizing the PIM memory bandwidth. And ML training benefits from scaling the size of PIM-enabled memory with PIM cores. We are going to see all these different points. The outline, first of all, we are going to start briefly introducing the machine learning algorithms that we focus on. Then we will talk about processing in-memory systems, these real-world processing in-memory systems and common characteristics that they have. Next, I will discuss the PIM implementation of the ML workloads that we have targeted. Finally, we will evaluate them and provide some key observations and insights. So let's start with the machine So let's start with the machine learning workloads. So here, as you see, we have this kind of figure showing different machine learning algorithms, supervised learning and supervised learning and reinforcement learning. We are focusing on regression, classification, and clustering, and in particular, linear regression, logistic regression, decision trees, and K-means. These algorithms require large amounts of data for training, and this is a computationally expensive process that requires many iterations. And in many cases, the frequent data movement, so there is a frequent data movement between memory and the processing elements, and the amount of computation in the processing elements in the cores is not enough to amortize the cost of moving the training data to the processing elements. So this results in low arithmetic intensity, low temporal locality, and irregular memory accesses. And these characteristics can definitely benefit from processing in memory systems. For this reason, our goal in this work is to study and analyze how real-world processing in memory, general-purpose processing in memory systems can accelerate ML training. We focus, as I said, on four representative machine learning algorithms, and we characterize them for motivation as memory-bound workloads using the roofline model. As you can see, all these workloads fall in the memory-bound area of the roofline. So let's start talking about the processing in memory. You already know what's processing in memory. It's a paradigm that advocates for memory-centric computing systems placing processing elements near or inside the memory arrays. And there are already some real-world processing in memory architectures from Abmem, Samsung, Mistky, Hynix, and Alibaba. And there are, among these five PIM systems, there are some common characteristics. The first one is that there is a host processor, either a CPU or a GPU, that can access standard main memory and PIM-enabled memory. PIM-enabled memory contains multiple processing elements with high bandwidth and low-latency memory access. These processing elements typically run at a few hundred megahertz and have a small number of registers and a small or no cache or scratchpad memory. And these PIs also need to communicate via the host processor. This is how one of these state-of-the-art processing in memory systems looks. As you can see here, we have the host CPU with several cores and its deep cache hierarchy. This host CPU has access to a number of DIMMs of standard DRAM, of standard main memory, and also has access to the PIM-enabled memory. As you can see, these state-of-the-art PIM systems consist of memory arrays. And near the memory arrays, we have the PIM processing elements with their different components such as instruction memory, a scratchpad, or cache, and the ALUs or compute units themselves. In our work, we use the Abmem PIM architecture that consists of general-purpose processing cores called DRAM processing units or DPU's. Each of them can run up to 24 PIM threads that are called tasklets, and they support 32-bit integer arithmetic. But they don't support multiplication or division. These are, these operations are emulated as well as floating-point operations. Each DRAM processing unit, each GPU has access to its own DRAM bank called MRAM of size 64 megabytes, and also a small scratchpad called WRAM of size 64 kilobytes. So let's discuss the PIM implementation of the machine learning workloads that we are targeting. So as I said before, we focus on four widely-used machine learning workloads: linear regression, logistic regression, decision tree, and K-means clustering. And these workloads and their implementations on their PIM system are diverse in terms of memory access patterns, operations and data types, and communication and synchronization needs, as you see inside the PIM core, but also between PIM cores. For linear regression, a supervised algorithm, we use gradient descent as the optimization algorithm, and our PIM implementation divides the training data sets equally among the PIM cores. Inside each PIM core, we will have PIM threads computing dot products of row vectors and weights, and each dot product is compared to the observed value to compute a partial gradient value. These partial gradient values are reduced inside the GPU and then sent to the host. We proposed, or we implemented, four different versions of linear regression. The first one is called LingFP32, handles training data sets of 32-bit real values, floating point. The second one uses fixed-point representation. The third one uses hybrid precision. It starts computing eight bits and then starts increasing the precision as it's needed. And finally, this LingWui implementation uses custom multiplication. It's a, like, custom multiplication that we design ourselves using built-in functions. Regarding logistic regression, a supervised learning algorithm used for classification, we use sigmoid as the activation function. Our PIM implementation follows a similar pattern, similar approach to the one that I have described for linear regression. And here, we have six different versions of the logistic regression. The first one, LogFP32, it uses training data sets of 32-bit real values. And in this case, the sigmoid operation is approximated using Taylor series. The exponentiation is approximated using Taylor series. Then we have the LogIn32, in this case, fixed-point representation. We have another version, another fixed-point version that replaces the computation of sigmoid instead of using Taylor series. You said, uses lookup tables. And for this one, we actually have two different versions. The first one keeps the lookup tables in MRAM in the large DRAM space of size 64 megabytes. And the second one places the lookup table in WRAM. Next, we have also a version with hybrid precision, similar to the one that we have in linear regression. And finally, the version that uses or custom multiplication. For decision tree, as you may know, decision trees are tree-based methods used for classification and regression. Or PIM implementation partitions the training data set among PIM cores and computes partial Gini scores to evaluate the split decisions done by the host. This host sends commands to the PIM cores. There are three different commands that it can send. The first one is the split commit to split a tree leaf. Second one is the split evaluate to evaluate the split. And the third one is min-max to query the minimum and maximum values of a feature in the tree leaf. The different PIM threads inside a PIM core work on different batches of feature values and compare them to a threshold to update the partial Gini score. And in these particular workload, it's important to be very thoughtful about the memory layout, how we place the features in memory in order for the PIM threads to access the data in streaming and this way maximizing the memory bandwidth. And the last implementation is K-means clustering, an iterative clustering method. In this case, what we do is again dividing the data set evenly over the PIM cores, and the PIM threads evaluate what's the centroid that is the closest one to each point in the training data set. After evaluating that, they update a counter and evaluate and update a counter and update accumulators per coordinate and per centroid. And then the host recalculates the centroid. Convergence happens when the updated centroid coordinates are within a threshold. So let's take a look at the evaluation of these workloads. Regarding our evaluation methodology, we use different data sets, synthetic and real data sets. And the systems we use for evaluation are the Abmem PIM system with more than 2,500 PIM cores. We use an Intel Xeon Silver with 16 hardware threads and an Nvidia A100 GPU. We evaluate quality metrics, performance of PIM kernels for a single GPU, a single PIM core, performance scaling across multiple PIM cores, and finally, we compare to CPU and GPU. This is the PIM system that we have used in our evaluation. It's a system that can have, can have, can have up to 2,560 PIM cores or DPU's and up to 160 gigabytes of PIM-enabled memory. And this is how it looks here. You can identify the two, the dual socket CPU, some DRAM DIMMs and some PIM-enabled DIMMs. So regarding the quality metrics, the general observation is that all PIM implementations show very similar accuracy than the reference CPU implementations. Only the integer versions suffer a little bit, but still, the accuracy is quite close to that of the floating-point versions that's common in linear regression and logistic regression. It's interesting that in logistic regression, because in the look, the loot-based versions don't use approximation, but use exact values in the lookup tables. They obtain lower training error rates than the versions using approximations. And for decision tree and K-means, we essentially have the same quality results than the CPU versions. So regarding the analysis of PIM kernels, here, what we evaluate is how the performance scales inside a single PIM core or GPU when we change the number of PIM threads from 1 to 24, that is, the maximum number of PIM threads that can run on a PIM core. Several observations here. First one is that all of these versions saturate at 11 or more PIM threads. The reason is related to the characteristics of the pipeline of the DPU's or these PIM cores. That's something that we already observed in our previous work. The saturation point happens at 11 PIM threads or tasklets. Another interesting observation here is that the fixed-point implementation accelerates the kernel by an order of magnitude, as you can see from this number here, from, to this number here. The reason is that floating-point operations are not natively supported while integer operations are, multiplication and division are not. But it is definitely alleviates the overhead a lot. So, but because multiplication is not natively supported in this hardware, we remember proposed as well or implemented as well a hybrid version that takes advantage of the faster multiplication that is natively supported. It's an 8-bit multiplication. And by using this hybrid version, we improved the performance by 41%. And the building, so the version with custom multiplication provides an additional 25% speedup. For logistic regression, we observe similar results. They, I mean, first, for the versions that use sigmoid approximation, we see that the execution time is extremely high, but that's because we are using Taylor series. When we move to the loot-based versions, observe that the performance improved by 53 times from the, you know, this LogIn32 version to the LogIn32 that uses lookup table in MRAM. The version with the hybrid implementation improves performance by an additional 28%. And the version with custom multiplication and additional, an additional 43% speedup. Regarding decision tree and K-means, first observation is again that the performance saturates at 11 or more tasklets or PIM threads. And also, something else is that for decision tree, the maximum number of PIM threads that we can use in this case is 16. But because this, it's because this kernel, this is the decision tree, is quite intensive in the use of the WRAM or scratchpad. And because that, the scratchpad is quite small, the number of threads that you can run concurrently gets limited. But still, that's not a problem, because even 16 or after 11, performance saturates. So no matter for performance, what's the number of tasklets or PIM threads that we use between 11 and 16. Here in this slide, you can see some results for performance scaling. Particular, these plots are strongly scaling from 256 PIM cores to 2,048 PIM cores. One observation here is that the PIM kernel time scales linearly with the number of PIM cores. It's something that is good news. And also, very good news is that there is very little overhead from inter-PIM core communication. Remember that this inter-PIM core communication needs to happen through the host CPU and also very little overhead from the communication between the host, let's say, initial communication between the host and the PIM cores and final communication to transfer the results back from the PIM cores to the host. Regarding the comparison to CPU and GPU, the version, I mean, the implementations of linear regression and logistic regression, they use a multiplication very intensively. So that's why they are not so good at this comparison, because these operations are not natively supported by the hardware. But still, the different optimizations that we have applied have considerably closed the gap with GPU performance. And hopefully, in future generations of this PIM architecture, we will see that this gap gets even, even closer. And in, for decision tree and K-means, it's quite good to observe that decision tree, for example, is 27%, 27 times faster than the CPU version and 34% faster than the GPU version. And K-means is 2.8 and 3.2 times faster than the CPU and the GPU respectively. So finally, key observations and insights. First of all, as you have seen, ML training workloads greatly benefit from fixed-point data representation, quantization, and hybrid precision implementation. These ML training workloads that require complex activation functions such as sigmoid can take advantage of lookup tables in case that these activation functions are not natively supported. Data can be placed and laid out such that memory accesses of PIM cores are in streaming. And this way, we maximize the memory bandwidth. And ML training workloads with large training data sets benefit from scaling the size of PIM-enabled memory with PIM cores attached to the memory arrays, as we have seen in our scaling results. To conclude, the executive summary. Machine learning or training of machine learning workloads is very computationally expensive. It's frequently memory-bound, and that's the reason why PIM can help to alleviate this data movement bottleneck. Real-world PIM systems are starting to be available. And that's why in our work, we have focused on understanding the potential of modern general-purpose PIM architectures to accelerate machine learning training. Our main contributions, the PIM implementation of four widely-used machine learning algorithms, the workload characterization of these implementations, and the comparison to CPU and GPU. We performed the evaluation on a real PIM system with more than 2,500 PIM cores. And we, I mean, our study resulted in several interesting observations and insights that I just enumerated. If you want to read more or learn more, you can go to archive to the extended abstract that is already published there. And if you want to learn more about the Abmem PIM architecture, you can go to this short paper that we published last year or the longer version of it. Out of this paper, we generated a lot of microbenchmarks and benchmarks to characterize the architecture and study workload suitability of this Abmem PIM architecture. And all of them are publicly available in our repository. And if you want to learn more about processing in memory, you can take a look. You can read this book chapter, "A Modern Primer on Processing in Memory," or also, or also, okay, or also watch the lectures of our PIM cores that are available as well in YouTube. So that's all from my side. If you guys have any question, please let me know.
In one place, you talked about that the PIM system is not supporting the multiplication work. That in that place, you sort of proposed something. I missed that, but can you?
To alleviate the fact that there is no multiplication supported. Okay, so, yeah, well, I mean, I don't have many details here. The thing is that the current Abmem hardware doesn't support 32-bit integer multiplication natively. They only support 8-bit multiplication. They have 8-bit multipliers. They have eight bit multipliers. So the way that the 32 bit multiplication is currently implemented is by using the traditional shift and add algorithm that may take up to 32 cycles. So because the eight bit, eight bit multiplication is natively supported, it only takes one cycle, right? So what we did is creating a custom multiplication that uses this eight bit multiplier. And, and, and in the end, the 32 bit multiplication results to be faster. Okay, thank you for the question.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. My name is Fernando. My question is my, it's more like a concept, concept question. The problem with machine learning training is that the algorithms are changing every day, basically. We have one day convolutional networks, the other day we have transformers. So how do you think that this impact the future generations of PIM? Because the good thing about GPUs is that you can just update a C++ code and then you have another function implemented that some mathematician described it. So how does it, you impact the future generation of the?
Yeah, that's a very good question, a very good thought. I agree with you that the machine learning algorithms are evolving very fast, especially deep neural networks. But so there are two things to say here. First of all is that observe that we are not targeting deep neural networks in this work. And the reason is that GPUs have a prominent position in, in, in training of these kind of workloads. But still, I, I think that at least, you know, for the precision and data types that are being used these days in GPUs, this specific architecture, the current generation is not the best one for the reason that we just discussed related to multiplication. But it could be better in, in the near future. What is clear is that this specific PIM architecture is not going to suffer from the, from the possibility of getting updated, because the models have changed. And the reason is that it's general purpose. You can program it, you can write whatever code you want, same as you can do on a GPU. But the problem that you pointed out, I believe that exists not only for processing in memory based accelerators, but also other types of accelerators. If one architecture is very much specialized on a specific model or a specific network, it may turn out that in a few years is useless. That's why I think it's, it's important and interesting to understand what's the potential of general purpose architectures. Thank you for the question. Okay, yeah. Oh, you also have a question, great.
Hi, my question is, you, you implemented four specific machine learning algorithms. Is there a reason to that? And why you chose them?
For these ones?
Yes, why this?
I mean, I mean, the, the first reason is that they are widely used, the, the four of them, I believe. They're classic and widely used, are textbook algorithms. And the second reason is that we wanted to implement algorithms that we know in advance that can benefit from this architecture. That's same as I said before, that's why we are not targeting yet deep neural networks, for example.
Okay. Really fast follow up question to what Michael has asked. So I spotted that you did test it, for example, I'm not going to talk about random neural networks or something like that, about algorithms that are machine learning, like random forest that include randomness. And randomness in data driven like algorithms, like machine learning inherently has some trade off of performance and accuracy. So is this like, is the randomness, because we are talking about processing memory, like an emphasis of PIMS, does it, it does, is there like a trade off between accuracy and performance? Because in the evaluation, I didn't see like any accurate evaluations and.
There are indeed, and actually, I mean, you, you mentioned random forest that is.
Yeah.
It's based on decision tree, right? And it's like.
Yeah, it's like a decision.
Multiple decision trees. And, and, and we evaluate it in terms of accuracy. And that's what we observed, that the training accuracy is pretty similar. It's very close to the, to the evaluated CPU version. So in principle, for this kind sort of algorithm, I don't see so much problem, because we don't really need to reduce the precision. Decision tree is mostly comparisons, right? And, and even if it's, even if you are comparing two floating point values, it's, it's okay in this architecture, because it's just comparison.
So, yeah, I was mostly focused about the randomness that is inherent in random decisions, like random forest or random neural networks. But your answer to that covered me. So yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the question. Okay, yeah, if there are no other questions, yeah, thank you very much for your attention, for staying here in this long special session. And I hope it was useful to all of you. So yeah, hope to see you next time.